Pilots, all right. Yeah, you can go down a little bit now. That's great. Thank you, Ms. Powers. Okay, good afternoon again. Sorry about that. Let's blame it on the rain. Thank you all for coming. This is the Shepherd County Board of Commissioners and High Committee on Pilots Payment in Lueb Taxes. And we are here today, and I'm so happy to see so many of you all representing pilot-granting entities, because we are here today for a joint working session. We are looking for a coalition of the willing so that we can make sure that what we're doing with taxpayer dollars benefit the public. So what we have, we have the mayor here today, and I know he has a robust schedule, so we're going to allow him to share with us at this time. Well, let me introduce our committee members or let them introduce themselves first so you'll know. Ms. Starick, you?
Regine Newman, County Trustee. Professor.
Hey, Dr. Austin T. Harrison, Assistant Professor of Urban Studies, Rhodes College.
Rashida Jones, Black Coalition for Housing.
Okay, we have other members of the committee who are not here. Vice Chair, Mikael Lowry. The school board member Natalie McKinney. Javier Bailey. Cordell Orin. Ms. Janice Banks, staffs this committee. And Mr. Shep Welborn, who is the administrator for the Shepherd County Office of EFC. So those are the members of the committee, and hopefully they'll be coming in soon. At this time, Mr. Mayor, you recognize.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thanks to all the members and all the assembled guests. I think this is an important issue. I do have some time this afternoon. I appreciate the invitation, and I plan to be here and be present for as long as possible. My comments are limited because I'd like to get to the business of the committee. But again, this is a, you know, top priority. This is something many of us have worked on for many, many years. And I don't think there's been any pilot reform across my career. I guess there's been some modest reform from the 90% reduction in taxes to, I think, the current, according to my most recent communication with Joanne Massey, is the current predominant amount is 75% reduction in taxes. But other than that, I don't know that there's been significant reform across many years and many, many conversations. This is a tough topic to take on, so I really appreciate your courage and your willingness to do it. The document I passed around is a simple document and probably duplicative of some of the information you all have already received. It simply lists the nine pilot-granting organizations in town. So it's not just Edge, but there are several other organizations. Of course, the most important is Edge, but there are other organizations that have the powers to grant pilots in town, so it's a list of those organizations. With that, Madam Chair, I defer to you and stand ready to assist any way I can. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm going to take the liberty to ask the first question, if you don't mind, and that is this. If you will share with us your role in this pilot-granting process or in economic development, affordable housing, all of that, what role do you play?
Well, some of the folks that staff and administer the programs may be better at detailing the specific details of the role in terms of the city and county mayor. But in general, we don't play a significant role, which I believe is probably proper, by the way. I believe that to have a politician picking and choosing among pilot recipients is probably not a good reform. However, we do have the ability to sign off from time to time depending on the pilot granted.
Okay, let me ask you this before I forget, didn't mean to interrupt. What do you mean sign off?
So, for example, my current understanding is that if a pilot is generated from one of the municipalities, that the corresponding tax reduction, so one of the municipalities like Bartlett might generate a pilot, and that would be a reduction in the Bartlett city taxes. And the expectation from the pilot applicant is that there would be a corresponding reduction on the county side. And so, to the extent that takes place, I'd be notified, one way or another, by somebody with respect to the, you know, Industrial Development Board for the City of Bartlett around the project and the expectation that the county will reduce taxes. Again, that's the expectation. I think that's probably proper. It's not obvious to me that there is a problem there, but I'd be noticed and then I'd have an opportunity to review it and arguably to do something. But again, the idea of a politician picking and choosing in that way, pilot recipients or no pilot recipients is probably a little bit too far, but I would get some sort of notice if it was generated there. The same thing is true, or at least the same thing.
But before you go on to that, Ms. Mayor, I have to ask before I forget. I'm 76, you know. Okay, so when we talk about, I got the sign-off part. When we talk about a corresponding reduction, now, I agree with you. I don't think we need elected officials picking and choosing. But as a city mayor, from that perspective, let's just use, let's pick on Bartlett, okay. Let's use Bartlett, for example. If they're reducing or abating taxes, are you saying that if Bartlett abates 75%, then the expectation is that Shelby County will abate that, and they have a form and a process, and you sign off on that?
That's my understanding. And again, I don't view that part of the process as problematic. In other words.
Wait a minute, okay, I need to understand that. I'm just, now, I'm a little slow here. So you don't, okay, so Bartlett will be abating 75%. We're not saying that Bartlett does. We're just using them as an example. And then Bartlett, if they abate 75% of their taxes, the expectation is that you will allow, is allow the right word?
Yeah, approve.
You will allow 75% of Shelby County taxes to be abated. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I don't know if anybody from the municipalities is here, but yes, that's correct. And just remember, overall, so that's not problematic. That's pretty fine. Remember, overall, the county is in support of our seven municipalities. And so, in general, if one of our municipalities, through their process, feels so strongly that a particular project is worthy of a property tax reduction, then it would be unusual for the county to second-guess that municipality and their decision-making process. And it would be unusual for the county to not support the municipality as it goes about the business of trying to promote economic development in that municipality. And so, that's probably fine. And the only way, if you were going to change that, the only way, and you can consider changes, but the proper way to consider changes from that perspective is just the commission decides to make a change, right? You just decide you're going to treat municipalities differently, and you go through a debate and a process to make that decision. And I think that's fine. But the way it works with municipalities is probably fine right now. The City of Memphis is obviously different because a pilot generated from.
Before you leave again, going back to the municipalities. So we're, I guess, I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So we're talking about equal reductions or equal amounts of abatement. 75% all examples, 75% on the municipality's part, 75% on Shelby County's part. So what if we changed that formula, and it would be 30% of Bartlett, you know, just quote, unquote, 75% of Shelby County? So I want to make sure Bartlett is abating, will be abating their taxes at 30% and abating Shelby County at 75. Your perspective on that?
I think that's just within the judgment of the county commission. I think that that is fine. I think you have to go through your process and decide. I think historically, there have been instances like that where maybe the City of Memphis might have had a 75% abatement, and the county had a 90% abatement. And so, the abatements, there has been a differential in abatements as between county and city in the past. I'm not sure if that's the case in any of those instances right now. But if you decided there would be a differential, that the county pilot reduction would generally be 50%, no matter what, and the cities could go higher if they chose, 75% or what have you, in their discretion, I think that's just a discretion of the commission. That's fine.
I haven't seen an item come before the county commission where we have to vote on the amount of the abatement.
Well, the county commission, again, I don't believe y'all are involved in any of the day-to-day work of initiating a project and bringing it to, and bringing a pilot application to close, which is proper, which is proper. The role of the commission, as I see it, would be to set the policy parameters in general for all pilots. But the idea that the commission or the mayor would, on an ad hoc or individualized basis, play a role in a project that's moving through the pipe is probably not appropriate.
I agree with that part.
Because if the commission played a role on a project-by-project basis, then that automatically means you're putting a political process into the project approval process. And so, the commission currently, as far as I know, again, we've got experts here. They can tell you. The commission, as far as I know, has no role in terms of a project, an individual project. And that is proper. That's proper, because if they did have a role, whatever it is, it basically is putting a political process on top of a decision about who gets a tax break, and that is not appropriate.
Well, I was responding to what I thought I heard you say, that it was, you know, at the will, that the county commission could take action if we wanted to change that abatement. And that's why I said, I replied that I don't recall having that authority. Well, I don't recall an item coming before me. So that's where I am. I'm trying to understand and get my arms around if, who makes the decision about how much is going to be abated on both sides?
The commission, I believe, has the power to set the parameters for all pilots, at least in terms of Shelby County government.
Well, we need to, our attorney is not here. So with something, Ms. Banks, are you writing that down so we can go back and have her to look at that? That's a big issue there, because we either need to have some kind of alignment or statute or some written authority that gives some specific directions regarding that, that we all understand. I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, I think y'all already have all these powers just to set pilot levels for all the pilots and so forth. The reason why that question, that debate, has not come before the county commission is because frankly, there has never been seven people who wanted to engage in a debate around where the pilot levels should be set.
Okay, I guess.
So that's, you know, that doesn't, that has not existed. And so, that's why you haven't seen that debate, because you do not have a commission that is willing to engage in that debate, or at least heretofore. You have not had a commission willing to engage in that debate. And the commission decides what items goes on its agenda, and the commission has decided not to put pilot reform on its agenda historically.
So, do you have, are there any documents that we can go and research that you are required to sign off on, because you did say something about signing off? Do you have a sheet of paper or papers that you use in your process of signing off? That you can share with us?
So, I usually only express, because again, I'm a politician. So for me to be involved in each individual pilot is.
No, 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 no. Back up now, because you said, let's go back to your role, and you said, you know, you have a role in terms of signing off, not, you know, afterwards, you know, after the project has already been decided by the municipality. Then you, as the mayor, put your little signature on a sheet of paper somewhere, right?
I think that's how it works with a lot of pilot-granting organizations, not with all of them.
Do you have your, the paper that you sign, and that's what I like to see, whatever document that is specific to your role as the chief executive of the county?
Yes, we can provide examples of what I would sign in order to signify approval. That's right.
Approval, right, okay. Are there any questions for the mayor?
I have one. Mayor, you were.
Austin Harrison.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Dr. Harrison, Rhodes College. Mr. Mayor, you were getting ready to say how the City of Memphis is different. When, if you choose, can you just finish that sentence? How is the city different from like a Bartlett?
Sure. And now, keep in mind, I haven't studied this in detail, but generally, the City of Memphis, because of its size, and it generates the most pilot activity, which is still not a lot, right? I don't think there's a lot of pilots generated from year to year. But the City of Memphis would generate the most. And at some point, we decided to make our Industrial Development Board special. And it's special in the sense that the county and the city make appointments and sit in a role of authority and control over the Industrial Development Board. And so, for the City of Memphis, as opposed to the others, the entity is Edge. And so, Edge is created and structured differently from other industrial development boards that might be in the municipalities. Edge is the one that is most capable, though, quite honestly, and able to respond to the commission and the mayors and the city council more than all the rest. And Edge also provides, you know, great notice. We talked about the notice and approval process and so forth. And so, generally, by custom, Edge goes even further than other entities, at least with respect to that process. In other words, they're always ready to make presentations and so forth should the council, the commission, or the mayors desire such presentation. I think in general, Edge's custom is to provide letters of approval to both sides of Pacific Plaza, and that I would sign off on that letter of approval, and the mayor of the city would sign off on that approval. And customarily, we would always sign off. Now, depending on who's the mayor of the city or the county, you might give additional instructions to the executive director of Edge around things that you might won't notice of, but that would be the extent of the process. And so, it wouldn't be unusual for me, you know, to say that I'd like to know if we're deviating from our usual pattern, you know? Because there could be a deviation, right? Because it's not just the 75% off and the 90% off and so forth. It's also the length of term. Will the pilot, will the tax break last five years, 10 years, 15 years, et cetera? And so, there's a range and an expectation that all pilots will fit in that range. But from time to time, those who are administering those programs will lengthen the period of the tax break or renew the tax break. And so, in those kind of special circumstances, you, as mayor, might ask, "I don't want to get into this business, but give me notice if we do something unusual, extraordinary, specialized, so that, you know, I can talk to the commission chairman, just in case, just to make sure he knows we're doing something a little bit different than what we've done before." But that's the extent of it. In terms of working up some of these deals, remember, all these entities also have boards. And so, all these things, as they move forward, also go through a board approval process with each one of the tax abatement entities. So Edge has this board, which, you know, I guess I bring appointments to y'all, y'all for my half, and I guess the City of Memphis mayor brings appointments for his half, for the city council. But those board members, which y'all approve, again, I'm presuming I bring them to y'all and y'all approve them, those boards are part of the process, and they approve every one of these things. I guess if you were to be troubled by something, I have been troubled in the past to know that that board has never disapproved of one. So that does cause a little bit of discomfort. But as far as I know, they've never disapproved of one. I know there are reasons for that. I've heard the reasons in the past, but that's still, that still may be a cause for discomfort. But the county commission votes yes on most things. So that's how boards work sometimes.
I have a part two to this.
Professor, I need to say your name.
Yeah, of course, sorry. Dr. Austin Harrison, Rhodes College. That last point you mentioned, I think, is a really important one, just for some context. Most recently, HGHFB, at Memphis, the city board did choose to take, you know, to end a pilot at a problem property, and the board voted 3-2 to make that decision. And then the city mayor came in as the city mayor entity and said, "Actually, this is our board, so we're going to take over compliance for these pilots." And it was unprecedented action, according to the Carpenter Law Firm, who's in attendance here, so I'll let them speak more to it when we talk about HGHFB Memphis. But my question is, could you, as the county mayor, ever do that to any board that's not Edge or like for a municipality? So if there was a situation where the board took an action, and you thought maybe that action was too strong, is it your role as the county mayor? Could you go in and kind of absolve that board's decision after the fact as in that sort of sign-off authority you mentioned earlier?
I don't think so. I don't know. I don't think so. I think that we don't have to give the county property tax break, so there may be some flexibility there. But we certainly wouldn't work a deal on the county side that the cities didn't want. All the deals are initiated from the IBDs, right? They initiate all these deals, and that's their role.
Okay, thank you, Professor. Mr. Mayor, let me ask you, from taking that. Okay, let's use, I'm troubled by the fact that industrial development boards, particularly in this environment that we're in now, and we're constantly involving downwork socially, economically, if you will. In this environment, it is very troubling for me to give municipalities the authority to abate Shelby County taxes. If we continue to have reductions in federal funding, what would be the process, if you would, for you to change the amount of abatement that, abatement of county taxes that municipalities are allowed to abate?
Well, I think the process to change that is it could be initiated from the county commission utilizing one of your county attorneys. Or if I got a letter from a county commissioner saying that they wanted me to bring forward a proposal to do that, then I would bring forward a proposal to do that.
A county commissioner bring forward a proposal, okay.
I would bring forward a proposal.
So you're saying that, you can't look at the social landscape, if you will, or look at our funding streams from the federal government and see the reductions and see a cause or a need to make some changes in the amount of monies or the amount of abatements to corporate developers?
I think the city and county mayor probably have the power to upset the apple cart on their own. That's probably true. Is this mayor going to do it? Probably not. But, yeah, we probably could, on our own, by withholding the signatory authority or some other mechanism, upset the apple cart and stop some of the pilots from being granted.
No, not stop. I'm just saying, reduce abatements, this, from 75 to maybe 50 or 45, if you will.
That's a tougher question.
Just reduce whatever the number is. I'm just throwing that out.
That's a tougher question. I don't know. But either one, I would be, I would not be inclined to do. Even though I'm not a supporter of pilots, I would not be inclined to make changes, significant changes, to our pilot structure on my own, because I would view that process as illegitimate. In other words, if we're going to make reforms on the pilot system, it has got to be through debate and a vote on the county commission, in my view. I'm willing to participate in that. I'm willing to advocate what I believe, but I believe unilateral action is not consistent with how our government should work.
Okay.
And so, I'm not willing to do it. But the next county mayor may be willing or the next city mayor.
No, I got you on that. I hear that part. I just want to make sure that's in line with my understanding that there's not unilateral. there's not unilateral approval, right?
I think the city and county mayors could probably take unilateral action to substantially change the system. I do. I have not looked at it closely, but I do believe we could, but I think that would be inappropriate.
But right now, we have unilateral approval, is it, don't we?
The city and county mayors, for many pilots, are the last set of eyes, yes. After pilots have gone through a lot of process from a lot of people, we would be the last set of eyes, that's true.
Okay, I'm failing to see the difference. It's a distinction without a difference. I'm trying my best. Are there any other questions? Well, I'm glad to see member Cordell Orrin here, and our county attorney is here. Oh, trustee Newman, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Regina Newman, county trustee. I have a question, Mayor. So is it your understanding that that final sign-off, if you have to give one, for suburban pilots or DMC pilots or whatever, if you were to withhold that, would that be a veto of the pilot?
Yes, I don't believe the pilot can move forward.
Okay, all right, thank you.
In those cases.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, the thing, I think the issue, the outstanding issue here, and I understand, you know, the county commission not having the will at this point in time to change pilots, and I'm not trying to upset the apple cart. However, I do see an imbalance in terms of social safety net issues and tax abatement, tax incentive packages. And so what I want to do is find a medium in there, a happy medium, if you will, and have a group that's willing to work with this ad hoc committee to help us come up with a process that will give a better return on investment. Oh, our attorney is here, could you, Attorney Megan Smith, if you would, go on the record and sort of reiterate or articulate for us the statute around incentive packages, what they're responsible for, pilots, what does that statute articulate? They are supposed to do?
Megan Smith, County Attorney's Office, you're generally asking about the application, the public meetings, and appearance process, I'm sorry.
Those categories that pilots are responsible for carrying out, economic development, et cetera.
Okay, let me pull up the statute.
Okay. So while she's pulling up the statute, Mr. Mayor, I think I was trying to explain that I'm looking for a way to reform, if you will, this pilot incentive process, so that there will be more money available for education, public safety, and social service net programs. And not that I'm a fortune teller, but looking at the federal landscape, we will have a significant reductions, if not already, in our federal funding for those kinds of programs. And so we're going to have to find dollars, additional dollars, in addition to funding our jail, Regional One, mental health center, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, sir.
And the schools are older than the jail, so we-
Absolutely.
So if we could do the schools, we wouldn't have so much pressure on the jail.
Absolutely.
But I get your point. And I was going to say, yeah, I mean, again, the political will is not there, in my view, for major pilot reform. But if you wanted to do some level of reform, it's probably along the lines you say, is looking at the 75% reduction and maybe moving to 70%, trying to find one or two colleagues on the commission that are willing to look at something like that. Or it's a carve-out for some funding and continue to flow to education. I feel like we've done that in the past. I feel like, you know, and maybe Megan can remind us all, did we do that with respect to TIPS? Because I feel like in the past, there's been some debate in this community, whether I was in this role or whether I was in another role, there was a debate in this community around how our local option sales tax dollars were being utilized, and making sure that no matter what the package was, incentive package was, that everyone would continue to pay their local option sales tax that would be devoted to education. That you couldn't get out of that, because sometimes some of that local option sales tax dollar is packaged up in a way to develop a community or to make sure a project comes to fruition. But as you package it up, you leave off some of the things that are really important where those dollars were going, like education. And so I do think there was an effort maybe among city and county at some point to kind of carve out education. So I don't know that history that well, but the point is, yes, you could probably carve out something and keep the money flowing toward something, again, if the political will was there, and yes, you might, you might be able to take a reduction from 75% to 70% or 72% or some such. But I think that, again, it just all depends on the commission, and it's really, really hard to find a group of commissioners that want to have this conversation after, you know, many years of trying to have it.
So if I understand you correctly, that brings to mind Hamilton County, Chattanooga area, and I think what they do, they carve out education from the abatement process, not just a portion of it, but from the entire process. They just, when they go to the table, for an example, negotiation, education is not on the table. Is that what you're referring to? Or you're referring to a smaller piece of the abatement, the sales tax only? I'm talking about the whole pie?
Well, put the sales tax, and just on property tax, I think you could do a carve-out for education. So, I mean, we could bring forward an idea to carve out education. In other words, our property tax rate includes several pennies for education, several pennies for debt service, and several pennies for, you know, our general fund. And we probably could figure out a way to say that the part of the property taxes that would go into the education fund, which is part of our property tax rate, the part that would go into the education fund should continue to flow into the education fund regardless of any property tax reduction that a pilot applicant has received.
Will it be more palatable or less cumbersome to do that across the board?
I think whatever you do, you should do across the board. Anything else is, in my view, very inappropriate.
I mean, just every category. Did you want to say something? Okay, every category, not just the property tax, but, you know, sales tax.
I think that's in the discretion of the commission. Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay. Mr. Orrin.
Let's move along.
Well, oh, okay.
And I'll be here, so.
Okay, I apologize. Okay.
Just, and committee member Cordell Orrin, Mayor, if you could wave a wand, in your experience and what you've seen while you've been in office and around, you know, country peer cities, peer counties, what would you advise as an optimal kind of shift in our pilot structure, whether that be the number of pilots, how we do the pilots? I know you can't do it, but if you could change it on your own, like just wave the magic wand, what would you say would be optimal state?
The optimal state is everybody paying their fair share in taxes. And so the way tax systems work, no matter what you hear today or tomorrow, taxes are on wealth and income. And so there's no reason for folks that have developed a property, whether it's a house or a factory or anything else, to not pay their fair share in taxes. So that's the best-case scenario, is everybody pays their taxes the same rate, and you do away with this system altogether. There's no obvious benefit to me of this system, and so you do away with this system altogether. So that's why we're thinking about it. That's obviously radical for this community. So that's very radical. So that does not have any votes in this community. If you wanted to get to a place where you could get maybe two votes for change, let's say you wanted to get in the two range, if you wanted to get in the two range in this community, you would probably try to tee up a debate around the amount of taxes abated compared to a tax cut idea, because everybody knows our property taxes are too high, unless, say, the trustee and others tells us that the amount of property taxes abated is 50 million, then some of our decision-makers could compare the taxes abated with some level of property tax cut. And the tax abaters will say, but that'll kill economic activity. But the tax cutters and generally will say, but a tax cut is generating economic activity. And so you could get to probably two votes by talking about a tax cut that could be generated. He says you can't get two, all right? Cordell Orrin is shaking his head, he doesn't think you can get the two, but that's, those are the things, I don't know.
I guess, so, Janice, you want me to cut off, so you can move on? Yeah, I can cut off. I'll ask-
I just have one more thing. This is a good conversation, and I'm hearing something I hadn't heard before, but when you say that, you know, people are going to say, well, we need this for economic development, and you're going to lose traction in economic development unless we do this, I take a look at it, and that's why we have this ad hoc committee. Hopefully, we'll educate some of our colleagues as well as the public, who will understand what we're trying to do here and our tax-granting population. I look at Nashville, we have, what, 532-plus, ma'am trustee? And then I turn around and look at Nashville, who have less than 50, and they have a more robust economic development community. I mean, they were behind us maybe eight years ago, and now they superseded us by 28 years, if you will. I'm looking at that. And then I look at, go back to my friends up here in Hamilton County, who have maybe 12, if that meant, a handful, and they sit right on the line, on the boundary, their boundary is with Atlanta. So it's just so mind-boggling, too, so interesting how their mindset is. They will carve out, take education off the table. They are not worried about economic, they don't have economic development issues, if you will, from their chamber of commerce, seeing that, well, if we don't do this, or if you carve out education, they're going to go to Atlanta. Well, they haven't gone to Atlanta, but Hamilton County has a priority on education. So, you know, I said all that to say, maybe we need to sell something more than, you know, that fear, that scare tactic, that we're going to lose, you know, some little project. I think we need to start selling all our other assets. It's just amazing to me, and I just haven't had the opportunity to actually talk to some of these economic development folk in other states that are doing much better than us and with fewer tax incentives, but I think the conversation is something we need to have. I know Ms. Janice is our staff person, and she's giving me the evil eye, because it's time for us to move on. And I really appreciate our audience and tax-granting entities for your patience, but we had the mayor here, and I know that we had some questions for him. So we will now move forward with our agenda. All right? Thank you so much. Ms. Banks?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Janice Banks, I just wanted to let the new people who arrived recently know that there is an agenda item and some handouts on the counter, if you would like to get some.
All right. So we do have before us, let's see, coming up would be the, Mr. Carpenter, Housing, Education, and Health Facilities Board for the city of Memphis.
And Mr. Carpenter has provided a presentation, handout, hard copies of their presentation.
Okay, we have it on the screen, and we have a hard copy.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the committee. I'm Charles Carpenter, 386 Beale Street. Along with me is my law partner, Corbin Carpenter, and Trey McKnight, the executive director of the City of Memphis Health, Education, and Housing Facility Board. We really wanted to thank the committee to give us this opportunity to come before you this afternoon, because we've been trying to cooperate and share information about the city's pilot program, because it's very different. We use the terminology of pilot, but it's not one-size-fits-all. There are different statutory authorities, different bases for the pilots, and what the committee has been looking at would be industrial development board pilots. Well, the Health Ed Board is not an industrial development board, so the statutes that the committee has been looking at is not applicable to the Health Ed Board. The Health Ed Board is structured by state law under a completely different statute, and it's not focused on unemployment, development of jobs, so forth and so on. It has a completely different view. It's a facilitating entity for health, education, and housing facility entities, and the county has a separate Health, Education, and Housing Facility Board. And years ago, there was a determination that the county board would focus on hospitals and the city board would focus on multifamily housing. And as this commission knows, there is a significant need for affordable housing in Shelby County. Right now, the anecdotal evidence says there are about 44,000 units needed to accommodate the citizens of Memphis and Shelby County, and the Health Ed Board has been a leader in providing those affordable housing. So with all due respect to the assessors' office that has brought information before this committee, it does not apply to the Health Ed Board for the city of Memphis. And it's unfortunate that statements have been made that the city's Health Ed Board has not been cooperative. There was an open records request from the county to the Health Ed Board, and that open records request said, we want a copy of all of the applications for all of the pilots that the Health Ed Board has issued. The Health Ed Board has issued pilots for 20 years, and we're talking about tens of thousands of pages of data. So when we wanted to ask, well, what could we do to streamline that down, they said, well, the committee wants all of it. They don't want it trimmed down. I said, well, look, in addition to the application, that's on the website, but then it's the attachments, market studies, environmental studies, option contracts, lender commitments, all sorts of things. So it was not possible to provide all of that information. So because of that, I think it's been unfair to say that the Health Ed Board has not been cooperative, because that's not the case.
Ms. Carpenter, and I have to respectfully interrupt you right now, because I was a part in crafting the request, so I don't recall, and maybe you have a copy of what you have just articulated, but the request that I recall helping to craft gave you an option, well, requested two different things, to have opportunity to review your pilot applications, or get a copy of those, and in the alternative, have an opportunity to come to the office, if it was too voluminous, and then review them on-site. I think that was a part of-
And that option was provided, and we were working with the county attorney's office, I don't know if they're still here, but at any rate, that's not what we're here to talk about. We want to be fully cooperative.
We just want the record to be straight.
We want to be fully cooperative with this committee, provide the information, but we want it to be accurate, because the Health Ed Board is not governed by the industrial development board stat- the Industrial Development Board statute under the Tennessee Code.
Would you cite your statute before so that I can write? Our attorney is not in here right now.
I'm going to let my partner deal with that in just one second.
Okay.
And the other thing too is that the way that the Health Ed Board pilots work is that in order for a pilot to be initiated, a quitclaim deed conveying that property to the Health Ed Board is filed. And that's filed of record. There is then a pilot agreement which freezes the tax on that pilot property to the pre-development level. So the county still receives that portion of it. Under the agreement, there's typically a 50% frozen value for the pilot before it's implemented. So that amount of taxes are still received. And then that agreement is filed of record, the pilot agreement. And then contemporaneously, the Health Ed Board leases that property back to the beneficial owner. And that lease is recorded of record. So the entire transaction from the pilot agreement, the quitclaim deed, and the pilot lease, all of that is filed of record. And in addition, this has evolved over time. The current version of the pilot agreement and the pilot lease sets forth all of the tenant benefits that are provided to the developer. So this pilot is not a windfall to the developer. It is an abatement of taxes based on not assessing the improvements for the term of the pilot. If it's a 10-year pilot, it's frozen from years one through 10. If it's a 20-year pilot, it's a 10% increase on the assessed value years 11 through 20 so that the property is prepared to get back on the tax rolls. So we can share all of this information with you and provide a distinction, a clear distinction between the City Health Ed Board pilots and any other pilots under the Industrial Development Board Act. Also, uh, in the PowerPoint, we provided copies for each committee member. There is a snapshot of the pilot program and a snapshot of the bond program. And in Shelby County, we talking about other parts of the state. Shelby County has the highest tax rate in the state of Tennessee. It's twice as high as Metro Nashville. And the median income is lower, lower than the other major cities. So without a pilot incentive, there would be no basis to have affordable housing built in Shelby County because the numbers just don't add up. And the need is great, the numbers don't add up. So for housing only, it's what we're talking about, multifamily housing, there must be some incentive to get a developer to even participate. And without the development of creation of new affordable housing opportunities, that 44,000, uh, number is going to continue to increase. So a moratorium on the Health Ed Board pilot, and that's all I'm talking about, would be devastating. For example, right now, there is 500-plus new affordable housing through acquisition rehabilitation that's on the books. So when you talk about development, the next question is, well, how do you pay for it? Well, you pay for it through our experience, through, um, the capital stack would look like grants from a municipality, grants from some other federal entity, uh, tax credits, and the issuance of low-income housing tax bonds. The City Health Ed Board facilitates the issue of the low-income housing tax bonds, tax credits in conjunction with the Tennessee Housing Development Agency. So without those tax credits, without that capital stack mix, we would not have any affordable housing constructed. We have four applications right now. And THDA, Tennessee Housing Development Agency, is about to issue its first round of tax credit awardees. ALCO is a local developer that has some of the best affordable housing, best tenant benefits in our city and county. They have three of those applications. If they are approved, then they will go forward immediately and bring 500-plus units of affordable housing into our community. If there is a moratorium, that's going to be a monkey wrench that will stop everything. And we had talked before, I had shared with other individuals and discussing this issue. To develop a multifamily affordable housing project, it takes 18 to 24 months. And there's a lot of money that's being spent on market studies, environmental studies, other feasibility studies, and so forth. And all of that would be lost because the lenders, the potential bondholders and so forth, they don't want that uncertainty about whether or not the pilot would be in place. Because taxes here are so high, it makes a significant difference when you talk about debt service coverage, when you talk about the ability to repay the debt service on a bond issue that's being issued for a multifamily housing facility. So that's why we're here to speak against any form of moratorium as to the City of Memphis Health Education and Housing Facility Board only. As to the industrial development pilots, we're not in that. That's a completely different issue. And I know that the county, uh, is in need. And there, this is a good discussion to have. But we just want the facts to be straight, particularly as to our client. And don't lump it, the City of Memphis Health Education Housing Facility Board along with Industrial Development Boards. And we think that the intention of the county is great for this. But we also want this county committee, ad hoc pilot committee, to, to consider that one of the greatest mistakes of an elected body or body viewing this is to judge their policies and procedures based on their intention versus based on the results. And as I just indicated, the results of a moratorium of any length with the City of Memphis Health Education and Housing Facility Board would be devastating and would, uh, eliminate the possibility of bringing over 500-plus affordable housing units to our community. Let me turn over to my partner.
Before, before you do that, Mr. Carpenter, so that we can be on the same page here, I need to understand your definition of affordable housing.
Affordable housing under the Internal Revenue Code would be citizens that either are 40% of the area median income or, so then there's a 40-60 test and a 20-50 test under the code. So 40%, excuse me, 60% of the residencies would have to be reserved for residents with, um, it's the other way around. 40% would be reserved for residents and families that earn 60% or less of the area median income. But the reality is, is that what our experience has seen is that these developments are 100% affordable. So basically, a family of four, they're probably making, um, you know, about $45,000 to $50,000 per year.
Okay, uh, Mr. Carpenter, just so, I, I definitely want to make sure I understand. Because if we, if we have a difference in that definition, then everything else would, you know, well, not, nothing else would be aligned. So when you talk about affordable, what do you, what, what do you view as the median income here in this Shelby County?
The HUD publishes annually the median income for every county in America. And that schedule comes out around April. I did not bring that with me.
Let's use the last year. Last year. Did you see last year's HUD publication?
I don't, do you remember?
Anybody know? Okay. $29,000, okay. So if, if it's $29,000, is that for one, a family of what, two?
Yeah, I think it's a little higher for a family of four. I don't remember, but it's probably in the, yeah, high 30s or low $40,000.
Okay, let's put that in the context of, okay, where we are here in Shelby County, and look at the jobs and, and the median wages here that we have in Shelby County. So, and, and we'll look at the apartments and, and multifamily dwellings and, and single-family dwellings that are being built. Explain to me how, and I'm using $15 an hour, which is what we, we have here at Shelby County, how does one family afford? How does one family fit into the affordability scheme, if you will?
They would be considered very low income.
That's the reality in Shelby County.
Well, that's why this pilot for the Health Ed Board is so important because without that, we're already 44,000 residencies in the hole. And without a pilot, that number is going to increase. So you're going to have seniors, you're going to have families with nowhere to go because they can't afford to live in a, in a sedentary and safe environment.
And I hear what you're saying, this, you know, just so that we can have a complete understanding here. You know, that has existed for quite some time. How long have you all been, you been in business? This didn't crop up yesterday.
Since 1978.
Okay, okay, so you, we've had this issue for quite some time. So e- even though you are not in the same statutory, uh, scheme or chapter or, or what, um, place as industrial, industrial development boards, we still, as an ad hoc committee on pilot, on tax incentives, as a policymaking body, we still need to understand the impact, I mean, the, the various standards by which your agency work and the processes you utilize. We need to understand what is being invested. Tax dollars meets the statutory, um, requirements, whatever statute is under. Are you in compliance? We do not have a process to ascertain that.
Well, let me respond this way.
Mr. Carpenter, if I could finish, please. Then we also need to understand how to bring transparency to this, of your, your process, affordable housing. We don't know anything about that. There's no accountability. So when people can come up and read a statement and say this, this, and this. But in order for the public to understand that we have integrity as well, we need to have a document that we can check off and say, yeah, they're implementing A, B, C, and D. We do not have that. And if you consider, you know, the, the hole that we're in when it comes to, going back again to this affordable housing, it didn't happen yesterday. It's been going on for a while. So we need to get our arms around that as well as the other incentives receiving agencies to fix some problems, some, to fix some things that are not benefiting the public or to be more transparent and accountable to the public. Thank you. You recognize, Ms. Carpenter?
In brief response, Madam Chair, when we look at taxes, as I stated earlier, these properties are dilapidated, they're in distress, and there has to be a complete overhaul of these properties. So the taxes that the property had been assessed and were paying, the county and the city will still receive 50% of those taxes. The Health Ed Board is not a granting agency, so we don't grant any money. The county is not losing any money except for the 50% of the taxes that they will be getting anyway. But the blight that's being remediated, the new residencies that's been bringing, that would be brought online, and the other benefits to the community is a consideration for deferral of that 50% tax that the county will continue to receive. So it's not where the county is with the Health Ed Board pilot is giving any money or granting anything. It's just deferring that 50% tax that's frozen during the term of the pilot. And the developer then does a complete rehabilitation of each unit. Uh, and it's needed because in order to make their numbers work, to have the debt service coverage for a lender to come and loan their money until the construction can be completed, that's, we, we, you, we called it, uh, in looking at things, this a but-for test. But for the pilot, would this development be done? And 100 times out of 100, the answer is no. Unless there is some pilot benefit, then this development, uh, would not be done because the capital stack would not be sufficient to cover the debt service.
Thank you.
If I may, Professor Harrison? You said, Dr. Austin Harrison, you, you said something interesting there, Mr. Carpenter, and I appreciate it because now we're getting into, I feel like, the heart of the conversation here, which is with that but-for test, you are distinguishing the developer's ability to have that 50% tax abatement go into the property, am I correct? And improve, make tangible improvements to the property and not their pocket, correct?
Correct.
Then tell me how in 2024, we have Millenia Housing Management, who was indicted by HUD for not putting the property, money into the property. And there's been an established precedent, I guess you would say, by HHF, where you will not enter the property. So how can you ensure that that money is going into the property if your inspection and your third-party inspections are driving by 1,000 unit, 500? New Horizon has 1,000 units, Memphis Towers has 400 units. How can I ensure that, and also you mentioned the statute. So I actually have the statute right here. It's Title 48, um, and it's special corporations. And it says, your intention, which you said to focus on, is the welfare and prosperity of the state of Tennessee and people who live in it, and the improvement and maintenance of their health and living conditions. So if that is the goal, what are the ways that you guys are making sure that that money, that 50% tax abatement, is not doing what past HHF pilot lessees have done, like Millenia Housing Management and probably others we don't know about yet? And, and make sure that that is going to benefit the tenants? And let me just say first, I know that's a very critical question. I just want to say, things have changed a lot since Trey McKnight's been on the board. There are compliance measures. I'm not saying you don't have compliance measures. But it's clear that that 2018 ordinance that you mentioned in your PowerPoint changed things a lot. And I'm glad you mentioned but-for analysis because I've been watching your board meetings for 18 months, and I haven't heard the word but-for analysis come out of anyone's mouth the entire time. And so I'm glad that that's there. But there's clearly not this, the, maybe the capacity more recently. Until, until Trey's appointment in the last year, things have changed. But there's clearly some things that I think we need to talk about in terms of the extent to which you are achieving your intention. Because contrary to what you're saying, this board has been almost solely focused on housing from the very beginning. We have not been lumping you in with IDBs. We've known from the first meeting that what HHF is doing for housing is super important. And you are 100% right. I agree with everything you've said, Mr. Carpenter. We need this tool. We need this tool going into the property and supporting people's lives and not going into Richie Richmond's pocket in New York City or Millenia Management's pocket in Cleveland, Ohio. We need local people seeing the benefits of that. And I think there are a lot of things that you guys are starting to do with compliance. You're getting a lot better. Tone has changed, board has changed. You guys tried to go further. You guys tried to go further than the city mayor wanted you to go. City mayor said, "Hold on, now you guys are enforcing this a little too much," right? So things are changing, but there's a reason we're focusing on housing, and we're not lumping you in with IDBs, because there are people, there, there was an elevator that almost put a man in ICU in Memphis Towers four months ago. And that was your properties. And the reason that's happening is because your inspection is drive-through. And the but-for analysis, I don't think are as prevalent as you mentioned. So that's all I need to say.
Ms. Carpenter, you recognize?
Just in, in brief response, as the committee member knows, these two properties that he mentioned are, were developed by a national developer, Millennium. And Millennium was not indicted for any activities they did here in Memphis and Shelby County. And as the committee member knows, the Health Ed Board voted to terminate the pilot on those two properties.
Two of the six that Millennium represents.
And we see there's a lot of passion on the board, and what we want you to know, we're on the same side. We just want you to have accurate facts and information as you go forward with your deliberations. And don't just, you know, go with information that is not accurate, because that's going to get us in a wrong position. So, but to your point, we do have monitoring, external monitoring, we have internal monitoring, the environmental court is involved with the oversight, code enforcement is involved with the oversight, HUD is involved with the oversight. So it's not just the city Health Ed Board. This is a complex matter, and, and, and an effort trying not to oversimplify it. We believe that the Health Ed Board has done its position, done its part, shared the authority and responsibility that it has, and we would be willing to sit down with this committee or anyone else and explain exactly how this process has worked. You know, there are some horror stories like Millennium, but out of a hundred and twenty-five pilots, we've got less than two or three percent that fall into that category. We have a, a abundance of success stories of families that are thriving, that are living in good conditions at rents that they can afford, based on their participation in the pilot program.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I need to recognize Mayor Harris, and then Trustee Newman.
Oh, thanks, Madam Chairperson. I didn't mean to get in the middle of the discussion, hopefully I'll can get back to it. But part of the discussion made me realize, one thing I've never heard a discussion of, and I'd love for you all to put this on the table, is what happens to the payments? Because we talk a lot about pilots, which is a payment agreement other than what you would lawfully have to pay in terms of taxes. So you make a payment, and that payment is calculated some kind of way. We've talked about it a variety of ways. But what happens to that payment? I think the assumption is that that payment goes to the city and county, and I think we need to put that assumption to the test, because I know in the past, a lot of those payments just went to the tax break granting organization. And so tax break granting organizations receive those payments, and were able to create huge funds as a result of that. And so, to the extent those funds out there exist, those funds are also within the ambit of the city and county, and those fund resources could be utilized for some of the things you, you talked about. So what happens to the payments? What pilot-making organizations have funds? And why aren't those funds being spent by the city and county right now?
Thank you. Trustee Newman.
Regina Newman, County Trustee. Good afternoon, Council. I have a couple of questions, pretty much going to be the same questions for everyone who's here, so if you want to listen. And that is, does the board have specific metrics, formulas, or financial analyses to determine whether or not to grant a pilot? And by that, I mean, what is the cost-benefit analysis? What is the community gonna get for these, these pilot abatements? Do, do the benefits to the taxpayers outweigh the additional property tax burden being put on them due to the abatement? So do you have a formula or metrics, or, or, aside from a but-for analysis?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And it's a part of the policies and procedures. It's the eligibility requirements. And the first thing is, is that a minimum of fifty percent or more of the acquisition cost has to be placed into the property for improvements in order for it to have a basic eligibility to be considered for the pilot. So in other words, if the developer spends five thousand, excuse me, five million dollars for the project, then they have to spend a minimum of two and a half million dollars in improvements in order for it to be considered for the pilot program. And the answer to the mayor's question, the pilot payments that are made on an annual basis are paid to the city treasurer and to the county trustee.
They, they are from the Health Ed Board. I said they are from the Health Ed Board.
Oh, the Houses part of that.
The Health Ed and Housing Board of the City of Memphis, yes.
The Health Ed, right. From the pilot lessees are making those payments directly, just like every other taxpayer with the same deadlines. And, and as opposed to their real property taxes, it's just the payment in lieu of tax, but that's made on an annual basis to the city and county.
Yes. So is it kind of presumed, then, that if forty percent of the units are going to be, quote, "affordable housing," that is the benefit?
That's part of the benefit.
Okay.
There are significant other benefits that come along with that, that we have a whole section called tenant benefits, and that each developer is responsible for complying with that tenant benefit that they agree to on the front end throughout the entire term of the pilot. And if they don't, then they can be held in default, and if they don't cure those defaults, then pilot can be terminated.
All right. And so you've done a hundred and twenty-five pilots. How many units is that, generally speaking? Hello, Corbin?
Corbin Carpenter, General Counsel, Health and Education, Housing and Facility Board. Trustee Newman, this is a write-up, about twenty-three thousand units.
So forty percent of those would be, quote, "affordable housing"?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or more.
All right. And the other question is, as a, as a pilot proceeds, who monitors and judges whether that pilot's meeting its contract obligations?
That would be our Health and Ed Board compliance team, with our pilot lease audit, inspector, our pilot internal monitor and external monitor, as well as we do have established a relationship with the environmental court and code enforcement as well, too, to go inside certain units.
Thank you.
Just one question in reference to that monitoring. You see, that's one of the reasons why we need to have this ad hoc committee moratorium, because we need to get our arms around that. You say you have a hundred and twenty-five?
That's correct.
Okay. And the monitoring is done by an in-house team in addition to code enforcement, which is a unit of city government, of which you are, why is that governmental? Is that correct? Okay.
As is.
That's why we need to have this ad hoc, so that we can give a different eye, put another lens on this, to understand better whether or not the process is working. Your monitoring compliance standards, are they working? Because if it's all in-house, it's going to be a little difficult to separate this out with, and won't be too harsh with the word, integrity. It'd be a little harsh to separate it out, that's all. Who had a question? Ms. Banks?
I did. I'm sorry. This will be quick. May I send you an email requesting the documentation that Trustee Newman referenced, so that we can have that as a part of the policies and processes that you follow?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Professor Harrison?
Yeah, Dr. Harrison, again, I'm just going to say, I'm just going to ask one more question, because the, the data request that was mentioned before, and the scanning of the documents, I just want to mention that there, there are other pilot granting agencies that do a very good job of, I can go on right now and within five seconds, and find out for the Downtown Memphis Commission, everybody they've submitted a pilot to that is active, the length of that contract, the parameters of that, that is all on a searchable database, and it is easy for some of this extra compliance that Commissioner Brooks is mentioning for the public to do, since, to your point, this is such an important public good. And I would just encourage us to continue, the reason of this moratorium was not to stop five hundred units from getting built, the reason of this moratorium was to provide public with more information around what's going on, which is a very critical piece of our affordable housing puzzle. And my passion earlier is because you're right, I do, we do care about this, and we are on the same team, which is why I just struggle to understand how the code enforcement partnership was just started under Trey McKnight's leadership, and how, to this point, I still have yet to hear any discussion of code enforcement's internal inspections in either the approval of new pilots, but something else we haven't talked about was Trustee Newman's brought up before. Twenty-one eighteen law also totally changed the way you all continue pilots, and the way pilot grantees are able to get additional pilots once they, once that fifteen, twenty-year max is hit. And I think we've seen a lot more of those occur as well. And so I just would like a little more information around, if, if other pilot granting agencies are producing this data, why is it so especially difficult for you all? And then what are, what are the details of the code enforcement policy in terms of how it relates to the way you evaluate new pilots and continuing pilots? Thank you.
Well, maybe you missed my earlier comment. All of that information is available on the Register's website. It's all a matter of public record.
The Register produces the owner?
Shelby County Register's office has the pilot agreement, the pilot lease, and the quitclaim deed, which includes all of the information that you've just asked about. So it is a matter of public record, it is transparent. We're in the process of upgrading the board's website now, but that information is already all of public record.
If that was the case, then why did we have so much trouble getting that information when we asked for it three months ago?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we shared that the information was all of public record.
Okay.
With the Register's office, but they asked, the, the request came to bring it from the board's records, and that's where, I mean, this is the first opportunity that we have had to address this committee. And there's a lot of information that we can share with this committee about. This program is twenty years old, and it has been evolving over time and getting more refined and sophisticated. So we came here today thinking that we were going to have ten minutes to talk about the moratorium, and didn't realize that we would have a full-fledged discussion. We have a PowerPoint and had requested maybe a, a, a separate opportunity to speak to the committee on the Health Ed Board, and that was denied, and we were given ten minutes today. So that's why we're unprepared on some of these issues, but we can share whatever information that's needed with the committee.
Mr. Carpenter, let me just say this, and at the time that that was requested, because I want the listening public, the, the taxpayers who are paying attention, to understand what we're doing here and why we're doing it. At the time that the request was made, it would have been, I guess, it would have been easy and less, you know, back and forth in communication if you had just shared that information, that everything we were requesting is listed with the Register's office. That wasn't stated.
Well, one thing with the assessor's office being present and the trustee's office being present, at the closing of each of these pilots, notwithstanding the fact that they are registered of record with the assessor's, I mean, the Register's office, we send to them a complete package of all of these recorded documents indicating what the pilot payments would be, indicating the properties, the parcel numbers, and all of that information for their records. So they have them as well.
Okay. All right, so you have them in different places, and I think one of the pieces that we also needed would, would have been the application. But as far, let me leave that there, because I know we're running out of town, out of town, time. But let me just say this, we wanted to include you in this so that everyone could hear the same thing at the same time. There, there was not any, any effort on our part to, to reduce any time that you had to share. The, the, we thank you for this, but I believe, and we, the committee believes, that having the opportunity to ask questions that we have is beneficial, more beneficial to the process than receiving, you know, being papered over. But we can always take this home and read it. But having you here on the record is very beneficial to the process, this ad hoc process. So it was not an attempt to diminish your time at all. Now, if you request additional time at another time, we can do that, too.
We'll be available at any time to meet with the committee.
Okay.
Share information and
Oh, I'm sorry.
To move this matter forward.
Thank you. One, Mr. Orin, I'm sorry. You are recognized.
Yeah, thank you. And you can decide whether to let him answer this now or later. It's, either way, it's fine.
No.
Board, or Committee Member Cardell Orin. Mr. Carpenter, one, one thing I would say is that matter of public record and transparency and accessibility for a government agency are two different things, right? So it's a little bit of a play on language to say it's a matter of public record, and whether the Health Ed Board could have it more accessible and transparent in terms of the work that they do as a body. So that's just one comment. The other part is about the but-for test, which there's, the process is not included, and I read through the, the whole thing, like, is not included in this. And I think when there have been attempts to reform pilots previously, the but-for test became a, a large part of that. And one of the questions on the but-for test is who assesses whether the, the, the idea that the but-for actually exists? And so one of the, the other, so one question would be, how does the Health Ed Board and this for other bodies, too, that, that bring forth a but-for test, how do you assess whether the but-for that any developer can put into their financials, that if we don't get this, we can't do it? That's, you know, math that they can do. But how do you assess the, whether the but-for is valid?
Mm-hmm.
So that's one piece. The other side of it would be also that whether the body has, has looked at, or could look at, changes in whether fifty percent or different amounts could be forgiven. Because it's strange, I think, that it's always, we have a but-for test, but the but-for is always fifty percent of property taxes, or seventy-five percent on regular pilots, that we always have the same amount, that if we don't get this specific amount, we can't move the project forward. It would seem that some projects would need twenty-five percent, or might need thirty percent, or might need the total, the whole fifty percent. So that would be another question on some of the challenges or opportunities for pilot reform, and what lies within the abilities of the body, and what might be necessary to happen from a legislative or, you know, local kind of standpoint to allow that to be possible.
And we would be pleased to respond to that question. Again, these things, you know, there are no simple answers to it. Just briefly, the statute that was revealed, the TCA forty-eight, one-on-one dash three-on-one et cetera, provides a delegation of authority from the state to the city council. The city council then delegated that authority to the Health Ed Board. And as was mentioned earlier, that delegation of authority was revised in twenty-one eighteen. So that delegation of authority fixed the fifty percent. The but-for test is done with the underwriting that the Health Ed Board does after it receives the application. Every application is not approved. So there is a schedule that looks at the pro forma with taxes based on the improved value after all of the improvements are done to these properties, whether it's acquisition, rehab, or new construction. And there's an analysis without the pilot. So those are then compared with the capital stack, the construction cost, the amount of debt that's going to be issued, what the debt service coverage will be, and that analysis will determine the but-for. And what we do with that underwriting process, if it does not cover the debt service with the the ratios that are needed for a lender to get involved, that's how the BUT-4 is determined.
I promise, this, this will be my last question this time. Dr. Harrison, Rhodes College. So the purpose of this coalition of the willing was to produce an opportunity and a space for pilot granting agencies to work with the committee. I want to make sure I can get a clear answer on the record here. As we move forward in our work as the committee, do we have a commitment from the Memphis H-E-H-F-B Board that there will be a partnership where we can explore ways to make data more accessible, look more at the monitoring and compliance of what you're doing, and ensure that together we are hitting the intention of the delegated authority from the state?
Absolutely, because this is all new ground. I don't think any of the entities have within their charter or within their mission to oversee pilots. So for us to participate in helping to chart that is the most effective way that we see for this committee to proceed. So we're, we are 100% in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions from members of the ad hoc committee, Ms. Carpenter, we will allow you to have your seat, and we will call up now.
May we be excused?
You may be excused.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, and have a great weekend. Downtown Memphis Commission, Ms. Chandel Ryan, Executive Director. And Ms. Ryan, we appreciate your patience. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Chandel Ryan with the Downtown Memphis Commission. Thank you all for having me. I guess, as we advance slides, I'll just say, next slide, is that, okay, perfect. Thank you again for your time and for the invitation to be here and speak with you about the Downtown Memphis Commission's pilot program. The initial question that's asked of us is about how the moratorium, we believe, will impact pilots. I want to focus on how they will impact investment in downtown and in the core city. Next slide, please. I do believe that there will be a delay in projects. Some rely on timely approval of pilots in order to move forward, and it's a part of their capital stack, to understand whether or not a project is viable. That's one concern. We want to continue to see economic growth in our downtown and in our core city. We don't want to slow that down if, if possible. And it also, these developments serve as a catalyst for their areas in bringing other projects to life, and so we want to continue the trend of that. We also are concerned about creating uncertainty for investors. A lot of times, before a project is brought to us, there is a lot of money spent, sometimes millions of dollars spent, spent in acquiring sites and doing plans, trying to understand what kind of development is appropriate for the site. And if there are not tools available that could help them with a capital stack for the project, they may just decide not to develop in Memphis for a time period. So that uncertainty is a, a concern that should be considered as well. And just perception around whether or not investment is, is wanted. Next slide, please. So just to talk a little bit about some of the key facts of the DMC pilots, click again, they always lead to higher long-term tax revenue. Every time we issue a pilot, it always ends up in increase in tax revenues. The developers always pay more. Also, the, the pilots focus on real estate development. We are looking to have transformative projects in downtown and the core city, and these pilots help to activate underutilized spaces and to also renovate, renovate much-needed, projects that have much-needed renovations are also able to be done by the use of our pilots. We also, just a part of our process, we undergo a financial analysis where we're looking at the performer, we're looking at what their capital stack, what their revenue resources will look like, in order to determine whether a pilot is really necessary. And there are oftentimes that we turn away investors or developers because their project just simply does not meet the test, they don't need a pilot, and oftentimes, we do turn away people because they just don't need a pilot. Also, all of our ongoing compliance requirements are in our development agreements. So there are clawbacks and ways for us to cancel pilots if we need to, if they are not meeting the terms of their pilots. And also, just want to make a note that we do not extend pilots at the DMC. Next slide, please. Just to give you a little overview of the area that we operate under, so you see the colored areas, that's the core central business improvement district, and we do a, a lot of work within those boundaries, but we also have an expanded boundary of the shaded gray area, which is the core city that we're focused on, bringing density to that area. Next slide.
Um, wait, hold it. Go back to that shaded gray, because I see it on the left and the right.
Yes, ma'am.
All of that.
Madam Chair, so the colored section is a central business improvement district specifically, and then the shaded gray area is also areas that we are able to function under.
Within, okay, with, within the boundaries there.
Yes, ma'am.
So did you acquire that by statute or policy? Or how did you acquire that extended area outside of the Center City, formerly Center City Commission boundary?
So we actually don't have, we're not limited to those boundaries, but we have chosen to limit ourselves to those boundaries.
Which boundaries? You chose to limit yourself to what?
James McLaren, 6075 Poplar Avenue. I'm counsel to Center City Revenue Finance Corporation. The original boundaries of Center City Revenue Finance that were adopted in
Wait, 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 all right, no. Center City Commission, that was the origin organization, and it had certain boundaries. So what I'm asking you, and I think those were the boundaries mainly the Center City Commission, but if you're moving out on the east and the west, in the gray shaded areas, my simple question is, how did you, what gave you the authority to do that? Was that done by statute, or was that some policy, or did you all just do that?
So Center City Commission and Center City Revenue Finance Corporation were both established in the late 70s. At that time, the city council and the county commission approved the original charter of Center City Revenue Finance Corporation, which provided the gray boundaries for its area in which it could operate, which is basically the parkways to the river.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but, and I don't mean to hold this up, and I, I'm gonna ask our attorney, she'll research this, because if I recall, that it was the Center City Commission, and this is very important, because you are developing, you have the authority to do development. So if you're doing development in areas that you have no, not, do not have the authority to do that in, then constituents will have an issue. But if I'm correct, if my memory serves me well, and I am 76, if I recall correctly, you were established by the state legislature for, within certain boundaries. Now, so are you telling me that the county commission came back and amended state law? If I understand?
The Center City, the Downtown Memphis Commission, boundaries were established by the city council when they established the Center City Revenue Finance Corporation, now Downtown Memphis Commission. And those boundaries were expanded in the late 90s, when the current Central Business Improvement District was
Okay, how were they, okay, in the late 90s?
That's the color, the colored portion that is shown on that map.
Under what authority?
Under a state statute.
Okay, but that was a question, sir.
But the city, the city council adopted, created Center City Commission under the state statute, and then re, then amended its charter later to give you these boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so our property pilots are designed to increase taxes, develop property, and to remediate blight. Those are the three purposes that we operate under. Next slide, please. This is just to give you an example of how the pilot results in increased taxes. For example, if you start with a property that was vacant and blighted, let's say it's worth $100,000 in yields, about $1,600 in taxes, and then a, and a developer would like to develop that property, and they are awarded a 10-year pilot because of the terms of the project that they're looking to build. And then they spend $12 million in order to develop that project. Now it's worth around $10 million. So $40,000 of that, $40,000 would be their new pilot rent that would go directly to the county and also to the city of Memphis. This shows a ripple effect for the particular area. Not only have taxes increased, now there's a new property that is developed, it is no longer blighted, and other projects can come online in that area because of the potential that this project has unlocked. And then after it rolls off the pilot, in number four, it now is assessed at $15 million and back on the tax rolls fully with an investment of, with taxes being paid at about $243,000 per year, county tax revenue. Next slide is an example of some active pilots that are currently under pilot agreements. The yellow bar you see is what the tax payment was before, and the red bar is what you see is now the tax payment currently while it's under the pilot agreement. So it shows a dramatic increase in taxes being paid by the development project while it's still under the pilot. Next slide, please. I just wanted to show you a couple of examples of some projects that have been brought online using this pilot incentive. For example, the Tennessee Brewery in the South Main area of downtown was vacant and blighted. It was really not great for that neighborhood, it was like a black hole there. It has increased in tax value 526%. Next slide, please. 999 South Cooper, another example, there was vacant land there, now there's a project, it's multifamily, it's in the midtown area, 600, almost 700,000, 700% increase in tax revenue. Next slide, please. Madison Lofts, if you can hit that again, there's a little video that plays, but it shows you what the, what the area looked like before, and now that it has been developed, it is contributing about a 240% increase in taxes. And then South Bluffs, I think everybody knows where South Bluffs is, in the south area, is a large apartment, next slide, please, large apartment, there you go, a, a large apartment, collection of, a large collection of land that developed into an apartment complex, and it had a 25-year pilot, it rolled off, and dramatic increase in tax revenue for the tax rolls. Almost, what's that, 600, 700% increase? Next slide. This just summarizes the benefits. I think you all understand what we are trying to do just by the conversations that we've, we've had, but we're, we're looking to increase the local tax base, we want to improve property conditions, we want to enhance the neighborhood, we want to create density in downtown and our core city. We believe that in order to have a thriving community, it starts with downtown, it starts with the core city, and it starts with us having density in those areas and uplift the entire region. Next slide, please. And that's all I have for today.
Mr. Orin, Member Orin, Cordell Orin.
Cordell Orin. Uh, I think a, a couple of questions. One, when the decision was made to reach out into the gray area, like boundaries, the core city boundaries, that overlaps then with the Health Ed Board? And would they generally, would property or developers generally have to go to the Health Ed Board if they weren't coming to the DMC?
We have a different purpose than the
I understand, I'm gonna get to that, I just, I just want to know. Like, that's gonna be the next thing I ask about the purpose. But like, generally, if they were not coming to the DMC for a residential pilot, they would go to the Health Ed Board?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
The Health and Ed Board focuses on low-income housing projects, which generally have tax credits, and a lot of times they also have bond issues that are related to those. Center City Revenue Finance Corporation doesn't do those projects, they will go to the Health and Ed Board. Center City would do housing, but it would not be what you would consider low-income housing that would have the tax credits or the financing.
Right, right, I understand that. So, so also to note that I think one of the, the reasons for doing the pilots also doesn't mention expansion of affordable housing. Broadly writ, not just low-income affordable housing, but affordable housing, if you understand my meaning, like, in terms of that.
I do, we do have a component, though, that extends to workforce housing with our pilots, so.
But it's not a goal, like, it's not
It's not a goal.
Yeah. So then, so, so then part of the assessment of the residential pilots from Center City Revenue Finance is, is, is not whether it expands kind of affordable housing, it's mainly focused on density and blight remediation.
That's correct.
And then the, the percentage that you generally grant, is that the same amount across the board?
We, we do have a 70, we, we have a 75% abatement, yes, and, but the amount of years that you would get a pilot, it varies. So you may, not everyone gets 25 years, some, some get, some projects get 10 years, so it, the amount of time also varies.
But it's 75% across the board for all of the years?
Yes.
And then what's the, what's the longest term, if you know, the longest term pilot that you have now?
Um, that's interesting.
Cause I, so I'll just say what I'm getting to. My question is, you said you don't give extensions, but part of my question is whether you actually have pilots, like residential pilots, because y'all just started granting them, that have gotten to the end of the term, where you know you don't, like, allow extensions, or we, we get to 10 or 15 years down the road, and like we've seen with all the other pilot bodies, now you'll all of a sudden decide, we, we give extensions?
We've had several to roll off. Last year, we, we have every year pilots roll off that we have not extended. So I think the answer to that is no, it's not, our policy actually prohibits an extension.
Yes, Janice Banks. Ms. Ryan, I, I have a copy of the, the pilot program for the DMC, and part of one of the good things that I read about the pilot program was your affordable housing program, where multifamily projects with over 50 units of housing must comply with requirements of the pilot affordable housing program. And you know, you have two different ways that, that the applicant can comply with that. One is that at least 20% of the building's residential units must be rented to households making a certain percentage, 80% or less. And I don't know if that's what you're calling workforce housing.
Yes, ma'am, that's the same language.
Oh, okay. And the other is that rents for these units must be capped at 30% of monthly income for housing. So that's the other option that the pilot can use. So basically, my clarification was you, you referred to affordable housing at 80% as your workforce housing.
Yes, that's, that is the word I used, but yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Can I follow up on that real quick? Cordell Orin. So, and, and with the workforce housing, affordable, affordable housing component of it, there's no goals in terms of family size or the size of the units? I guess, getting to the point of many of, of the ways that I think I've heard over time that that happens, is that the, the developments do studios, and they don't actually focus on families, so they hit their numbers on affordable housing by doing just smaller units.
Give me one second, I, I don't
If y'all know, y'all don't have to know now, I'm just wondering about that. If y'all know, y'all don't have to know now. I'm just wondering about that.
Let me make sure to get the correct answer on that. But I believe that the family size is not a part of the consideration, but I want to just check to make sure.
And, Janice Banks, Cordell, sorry, not that I'm the attorney for the DMC, but I do happen to have the program. And it does list family size up to eight people as being a part of their... No, it's, well, I don't see that it's being required.
Okay, Ms. Ryan, I have a couple of questions. Do I understand that you, I think you said you do not issue extensions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So is that something of recent policy, or has that been the policy, the origin policy?
It's been, it's, I don't know exactly how long that has been the practice, but I know that it has been at double-digit years at least.
So at one time you did issue extensions, okay.
We, we have, may I respond? I don't want to cut you off, Madam Chair. Okay. We, we have in the past, I think there are two that we've identified that were very special circumstances years ago before the policy was to not extend. Now, what you may be referring to is the Pilot Extension Fund, which is a separate matter. If you want to have a conversation about the Pilot Extension Fund, it's, it's separate and it's set up, it was set up by approval of the county and the, the county and the city. And we do have some active pilots that are in that fund.
Okay, okay. So is the Morgan Keegan Tower in that fund?
It rolled out.
Right.
It's rolled out of that fund.
When?
Do you know when?
Anyone know? Don't, don't-
Last year, ma'am.
So let me ask this one last question. In terms of your abatement, I think I read, and I really, you know, I hate to have to repeat something I read that was reported on by quote-unquote reporter, but that was my source, that you all increased your abatement up to 75 percent from what was 50. Is that correct? There's been no changes in your abatement?
No, other than when the 25 percent was implemented in, what year was that? On the county side, the 25 percent was implemented about 15 years ago. But it was not 50 percent before that.
Okay, so you had, it was a 50 percent abatement, and now you're saying four years ago?
James McLaren. At one point, the, some of the pilots required at the latter years of their term, 50 percent abatement. That was before the 25 percent minimum requirement was put into place. And so all pilots have a 25 percent abatement that goes the entire term today.
Okay, so you're at 75 percent abatement now?
Yeah.
Okay. So before that, you were at 50?
No, ma'am. Before, before that, it was no, it was no, it was 100 percent abatement other than, other than the base assessment based on the appraised value immediately prior to acquisition.
Okay. You're right. It was 100 percent, and then you came to 75 percent, and then you lowered it to 50, right?
When it was, when it was 100 percent, for some pilots above 15 or 20 years, there was a 50 percent abatement that kicked in at some point. But those, I think all those pilots have phased out now, or there may be one or two of them left.
So lastly, in terms of just monitoring for compliance issues?
Yes, ma'am.
Being, being able to show that what's on the application is in fact what is being implemented, how is that accomplished?
We have a, an annual requirement for reporting that goes to our CFO.
That's internal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Ms., I'm sorry, trustee, no more.
To follow up on my prior questions, does the board use a specific metric or formula to determine whether to grant a pilot?
So there is a before test that is administered. The staff does the initial review of that and makes a recommendation to the board. As a part of the package that is given to the board, it includes all of that before information. So they're reviewing that as a part of their application process when it goes before the board. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that, that's it, just a before test and no, no specific formula or, or metric on how that determination would be made?
With, for, yes. So they're looking at information like the pro forma, the capital stack, the revenues that could be generated to determine whether or not it, the project would need a pilot in order to be viable and to come online. I hope that answers your question more clearly.
All right. And to follow up on Chairman Brooks' question. So as the pilot proceeds, it's the board or the staff that monitors compliance with the pilot contract?
Normally, the staff will do that, to work directly with the developer to get the information to make sure.
All right. And to follow up on Member Orin's question, how many units have been built by DMC?
I can get you that information.
Okay. And it would not be appropriate to assume that 20 percent of them would fall under the quote "affordable housing," since there is no goal?
Say, say that again. How many units-
Are you saying, how many units have been built? And could we say that 20 percent of them would, would be determined to be affordable housing? Or since there's no goal, we could not say that?
It, it depends on when the pilot was issued. I do believe that there are some pilot agreements that require 20 percent. I don't, I, I'm not for certain what it was before this current policy. I would need to check that to, to answer that question.
Okay.
Okay.
And last, back to the old Pilot Extension Fund. No additional pilots have been added to that fund in some years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And at, at what time do they all age out?
We, we believe 2024, but we'll be happy to get it for you.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, lastly, just one thing I cannot, I, I want to be real clear about regarding the application for affordable housing. How do you verify, I know you have, you say you have an internal group that does that monitoring. How do you verify the number or the percentage of low-income or affordable, however you want to call it, housing versus what's in the application?
We receive a certification from the developer that they have set aside the appropriate number of units for the affordable housing component of their grant.
So, so would it be in the interest of the developer to say that they have not complied with what they said they were going to provide in the application?
If they are not complying with the pilot agreement, then they lose, they could suffer the loss of their pilot.
How do you know? Do you verify?
We verify through the certification process.
Outside of that?
It, the certification process is the process that we're using.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ryan, we thank you so much. We especially appreciate your patience in that we were running late. So now we will, if you have final comments, it's fine. If not, we will move on to the next entity, which is Bartlet.
Madam Chair, I just have a question. I don't want to approach, but I left my, my drive. If I can grab it right quick.
She'll bring it to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay. Is Bartlet here? Well, good evening.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Tricia Adrian.
Pull that down a little bit more. Okay.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Tricia Adrian, 6060 Promise Parkway. I am counsel for the Bartlet IDB. The Bartlet IDB, Bartlet is the 11th largest city in the state. We, we don't have, have a presentation for you. We do have some answers, you know, for some of the questions. But we, Bartlet, the IDB uses pilots for job creation, capital investment, and wages. They have a large medical device and advanced manufacturing businesses there. In the past four years, Bartlet's seen 396 million in capital investment and created more than 2,500 new jobs. Some of the companies that have received pilots and that have been doing well, they've, some of those have gone through the pilot program or are now paying full taxes, like Brother, St. Francis, Brimhall, Memphis Record Pressing, Engineer Medical, Grace Medical, a number of medical device companies. We're happy to answer any questions. We use EDGES. It's kind of hard to talk with this microphone in your face. We use EDGES, pilots, policies, and procedures because the inter-local agreement with Shelby County requires that Bartlet not give any incentives that are greater than what Shelby County would give already. So the IDB board had decided to just use EDGES, policies, and procedures, and as they update them, we adopt those.
Okay. You know, I, one of the things I wanted to do was to give you, everyone, an overview of what we were, our objectives. And I apologize, I'll send it to the ones who have gone, who've left. Oh, we did? Oh, good. Okay. So how much, I guess, what percentage of Shelby County taxes does Bartlet abate?
The same as, as the city of Memphis, it would be 75 percent.
And how much, what percentage of Bartlet taxes do you abate?
75 percent.
Madam trustee?
Regina Newman, county trustee, sorry. The statements the mayor made earlier, is it presumed that when Bartlet processes a pilot application and approves it, that the county's gonna go along with it?
Yes, I can walk through that process a little bit. So when a company comes to the IDB with an application for a pilot, we take that, look at it, we send it over to EDG. And EDG assists us in going through the matrix and, and figuring out how many years that they would be eligible for, for a pilot. So if the abatement stays at 75 percent, but the years adjust. So then we get a analysis from Sharon Younger's firm. And at that time, we put together, then it comes back to us, we put together a letter from our mayor to the county mayor asking for the support with the jobs, wages, capital investment numbers.
And is it, is it your understanding that he would have the ability to approve or decline?
Yes.
Okay. And how many, if any, housing units have pilot-
We, we do not have a residential pilot.
No, no pilot, no housing. Okay, thank you.
Member Orin?
Cordell Orin, I'm sorry if I missed it, but the, do you do the same amount of withholding? Is it set at 25 percent? Or does Bartlet do something different?
Yeah, it's the same.
Okay.
Professor Harrison?
This is a more general question, but I'm just interested with the Bartlet IDB. You know, we've talked about the tensions between education funding and pilots. And Bartlet, has there been discussions of pilots in terms of how that impacts the independent school district, you know, kind of being as, as a, as a-
No, I mean-
Shelby County schools?
Yeah, so, no. However, the companies that are receiving pilots, the pilot recipients, they're paying 25 percent of the full taxes. And, you know, the IDB, with the before test, they would not be in Bartlet otherwise. So that, even the 25 percent tax payment usually is way more than what the current tax payment is on the property, if it's raw land or if it's a vacant building. So that 25 percent would go to Bartlet for them to designate for their schools.
Thank you.
Yeah, and along with other revenues. And this is Kim Taylor. She's the economic development and planning director of the city.
All right. Let's see. Any other questions for Bartlet? Bartlet, did you have any questions for us?
As I mentioned earlier, I mean frankly, I asked that question to the group I didn't think would be in the coalition of the willing, but I'll ask it to everybody, yeah. Is, as we're forming this coalition of the willing and as we're continuing to, to work with pilot-granting agencies to, you know, streamline and, and create maybe a repository of compliance and, and data related to pilots, is the Bartlet IDB willing to work with this body as we move forward on that work?
Yes, yes, of course. We will help with that.
Thank you.
You know, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand when you have applicants for tax incentives come to your area, and I'm sure they're accompanied by, you know, suits from the chamber. I'm just wondering, what are, what are they selling here in Shelby County?
What are the companies selling?
What, I mean, what are you all selling the applicant in terms of, you know, enticing them to locate in Bartlet? What assets are you selling? Other than tax incentive? I mean, this is a great place to-
Well, yeah, of course. I mean-
So what do you sell?
The, the chamber certainly would, you know, assist with showing that Bartlet is a great place to locate your business.
I need you to come to the mic and say your name, please.
We talk about, it's a safe place. We talk about housing that's available, not necessarily low-income or affordable housing, but that it is available. We advertise great education for the children, that we are adjacent to, you know, the major cities like the city of Memphis, easy accessibility to transportation. And a lot of times, we have companies shopping through the Tennessee Department of Economic Development, and it comes through from them to the chambers and then to us. And currently, we're in the process of trying to develop a second industrial park. We recently annexed in some additional land, and we're trying to get that going. We see ourselves as a good place and a central place for all of Shelby County to access jobs and to increase income. And we actually have, with the last five pilots, put together like, what's the total abatement amount, what's coming in as far as a benefit to all of Shelby County, not just Bartlet? So we look at the overall picture. It's not just about, we want you here in Bartlet. We would love to have them in Bartlet, but we look at it as a benefit for the county as a whole.
Right. And, and we do have some statistics here as far as some pilots for- And, and we do have some statistics here as far as some pilots for, within four years recently tested, the capital investment for the pilot companies was $48 million and the abatement was 3.6 million. So pretty good tradeoff.
Again, say that again.
So the capital investment is 48 million with an abatement of 3.6 million. And that was from 2018 to 2022. That was the last time it was measured in that way.
And who measured it?
Younger and Associates did that. I think, who directed that? It was for all the municipalities.
Madam Trustee?
Regina Newman County Trustee, is that the total abatement city and county and the total investment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The Shelby County Alliance?
Shelby County.
The Shelby County Chamber Alliance in 2022.
Chamber Alliance, okay.
Contracted with Younger and Associates to put together a study. And we pulled the numbers from those studies for the information today.
Okay, thank you. And no other questions for my members. We thank you so much for your presentation. Did you want to have some final remarks? And I need to get your name again and your organization.
My name is Tricia Adrian. I'm with Harris Shelton, which is 6060 Primacy Parkway. And we also have an office downtown. And I'm counsel for the Bartlett IDB.
IDB. You're that, what now?
Attorney.
Attorney. Are you? Okay. Thank you so much.
And I, yeah. We're happy to answer any questions, so feel free to follow up with any reports you would like from us.
We'll do that. Thank you so much. All right. We're moving here. Would any of you all that's sitting out here, like a bottle of water or something? Anybody? Okay, you good? We're good? Okay. We will now hear from Arlington. Is Arlington here? Huh?
I'm gonna stay.
You're Bartlett and Arlington? Okay.
Catherine Durant, Town Administrator, Town of Arlington and the Arlington Industrial Development Board. Just a little history on Arlington. Arlington's economic development mission statement is to recognize that high-quality town services are largely dependent on a strong business community and provide for the further enhancement of a strong economic base by encouraging revenue-producing, high-quality, clean retail, commercial and industrial development that is compatible with a community of homes. Arlington IDB uses pilots to spur growth and development in our community. The Industrial Development Board of the Town of Arlington is a party to an interlocal agreement dated November 5th, 2010, which set forth guidelines regarding pilot incentives. Arlington's IDB pilot compliance policies align with EDG policies. However, Arlington has enacted a stricter pilot scoring method with a higher wage requirement than Shelby County or EDG. And just want to make note that we do have a matrix. We do follow that matrix. We use the investment in the community, plus the number of jobs, plus the minimum wage, plus the economic impact to determine whether or not that is an investment that we think makes a positive impact, not only on Arlington, but Shelby County as a whole. Ultimately, we're, we're all kind of competing for any industrial development that comes to the area. As long as it stays in Shelby County, it benefits Shelby County. So I think that's one of the things that we all do very well with one another, communicating. And Tennessee Department of Economic Development does the same thing, is they send out regular emails to let us know who's looking in the area for what, what we might have available. I will note that Arlington last year had three active pilots. We're in the process of terminating two of those. Those are both industrial pilots. Arlington does not currently have a residential or a retail pilot program. We only do industrial pilots. I've been with the town for 28 years. When I came onboard, there was probably 12 pilots. And a little bitty town called Arlington, it's probably smallest entity before you today, we have been very proactive about making sure that we make sure that those pilots go back on the tax roll if they are not in compliance or if those tax periods, those abatement periods have expired. So we will be down to one active pilot, which is Microport. And both of, or three of the active pilots for last year were all medical device manufacturers. Be glad to answer any questions, be glad to work with this committee in any way possible. Answer any questions you have.
I have just one question. You don't have, the only pilots, you have three pilots, they are medical device companies. Do you have any active TIFs?
We were just approved for a TIF. Nothing has been built based on that. We've never had a TIF before. We have a large retail, and multi, not multifamily, what's it called? Oh, goodness. Mixed-use plan development, thank you, Tricia. A large development along the I-40 corridor. That's another thing that Arlington has going for us and that we use to entice people to, to choose Arlington, is you have the I-4385, I-269 corridor right there, plus we're the closest city to Blue Oval. We have never had a TIF in the 28 years that I've been there in the history of the city, but we were recently awarded, is that the right word? A TIF. No construction has begun on that, but it would be a game changer to the face of Arlington right there at that I-269, I-40 corridor.
Okay, thank you. Madam Trustee?
Good afternoon, Regina Newman County Trustee. Could we, could you send in a copy of your matrix?
Yes, ma'am, not a problem.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your efforts on compliance.
You're welcome.
And, and who does your compliance? Is it external or internal?
Internal.
Done by? Is it a checklist?
Staff.
So you, do you send out a desktop checklist of what?
Well, yes, we send out a form that they have to fill out. And then when the form is filled out and sent back to us, we actually go to the pilot agreement and make sure that they are in compliance. Now, we have been proactive in that in the past. And I'll give you an example. We had a industry, it's a small city, so you know just about everything. We had an industry probably 10 years ago that outsourced all of its personnel department to China and laid off 191 people. What I do, I picked up the phone, I called the industry and I said, ah, we need to see your numbers. Because if you just outsourced your whole personnel department to China and it changed your numbers drastically in 191 employees, we need to make sure you're still in compliance with that pilot. Ms. Adrian was beneficial in negotiating back with that company and getting those adjustments made that we had to have to make sure that, that that pilot stays in, in compliance.
Okay, well, now I think that's good, that's good and fine. I guess what I'd like to know, if you have maybe pre-award and post-award reviews, onsite reviews? It has been my experience, and some time ago, and quite recently, where we have corporate, corporate company, corporate, corporate headquarters holding themselves out for 120 jobs coming to XYZ City. Okay? And then when you do an onsite review, you find out that the 120 jobs are coming from their previous location, when in fact, none of those are new jobs that will go to the residence of the new location.
Arlington is unique in that we are a small community and a company coming in is going to bring some of those jobs with them.
Do you count that in the new jobs that stated on the application? Or do you subtract anything they bring in from the jobs to create it? Because you're not creating a job if you're bringing it in, you're relocating.
I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but if they're moving from Shelby County to, if it's another location in Shelby County to Arlington, no, they do not count as new jobs. They have to be net new jobs.
Has to come from outside the area. Outside of the county.
Well, if they're, no, no, they're not, that's not creating a new job. If it's from Oklahoma coming to Shelby County, if they're just relocating 50 people and they say that we're going to create 50 jobs, that's not a creation of jobs, because those 50 jobs will not be filled by Shelby Countians, they'll be filled by Oklahomans.
Oh, you mean like a remote position?
No, ma'am.
Okay, now.
We can have this conversation offline, but just think about it. Okay. Anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you.
No, no, I do have a question.
Ms. Banks?
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, I mean, I think the position would be that those are new jobs to our community. And so they would count as net new jobs. If they're coming from Oklahoma to move here, yes, that's what we want.
I don't want to beat this dog to death, but let me just say this, because you might need to revise your application to get your numbers right. And if your application says the number of jobs created with this pilot, and they put in 100, okay, created is the operative word here. Coming from Oklahoma, they bring 100 staffers and put them in the office here in Shelby County. So that is not, that's relocating. You're not creating any new jobs with your widget factory. No. You've just relocated some folk from your Oklahoma widget factory to Shelby County. So there was no, zero net job creation. So that's what I'm talking about when we say compliance and verifying what they put on the application and what is actually, what actually exists and is implemented.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, the, these applicants would be applying to the company. I don't think people are checking up on where they lived before. We certainly don't want the jobs to be shifted from somewhere else in Shelby County to here. Now, if we can get jobs from Oklahoma, I think that that is a positive for the community.
For your tax base, for your economic impact, for housing.
And the way it normally would work, I mean, 100 people aren't going to move for a relocation. Usually, it's the, it's the managers and the high-paying jobs that those individuals are the ones that would move, and then they would hire locally from here. I mean, that's typically what happens. But of course, you know, we want new people to move here and work and live.
Ms. Banks? Janice Banks. Ms. Owens, right?
Durant.
Durant.
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Adrian.
Adrian.
Right, you, you did send us your P and P earlier. Could we get the policy and procedures that you guys filed for your applications that will probably include what, yeah, the matrix that the trustee requested? And who should I send that email to?
You can send that to me. Yes, we'll certainly send that. It's, it's, just for your information, it's pretty similar to the EDG one, other than Arlington wants higher wages. So.
Any further questions? See, now, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, as the next entity comes up, I don't see EDG on our agenda. Are they scheduled for another day?
No, I think I, I do have an email from EDG, and I believe they were going to, let's see, some event, and they would not be able to attend, let's see.
They did send their, Janice Banks, they did send their policy and procedures.
Okay. Do we have handout on it?
No.
Okay. We have Memphis Housing Authority, Mr. Dexter Washington.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening, sir. How are you today? And thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you. I, I am Dexter Washington, CEO of Memphis Housing Authority, 700 Adams Avenue. Before I begin, and thanks for putting the PowerPoint up, before I begin, I'd just like to say that Memphis Housing Authority is a little unique as to most of the organizations that have come before you today, in that while we do have a pilot, we are not the administrators of our pilot. The Health Air Board is the administrator of the Memphis Housing Authority pilot, and I know you guys have already spoken extensively about those policies and procedures. So what I'll present today is just kind of some of the impacts of what that pilot has produced over the last few years.
So, just so I understand, why are you not the authority for your, or the implementer or what have you for your pilot?
That decision was made years before me, I don't know how they.
Is that in statute?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The, the Health Air Board, in essence, is the administrator for affordable housing pilots as well as educational institutions and other entities across the board. So there are other organizations similar to Memphis Housing Authority that also have pilot authority and don't administer them.
So you're going to tell us why you exist, right?
Well, I will, I will tell you our part in, in supporting these pilots. So. First slide, please. So just to begin, you know, and this has already been discussed, but just to kind of frame the, the need, is that there is an extreme affordable housing shortage in the city of Memphis. And, you know, the city lacks approximately 40,000 rental units for Memphians who qualify within the low-income ranges, whether that's low, very low, or extremely low. And there is also a shortage of affordable housing for seniors and individuals with disabilities. Next slide, please. So how we address this is through a collaborative approach of government funding programs, which could be local funding programs like the Memphis Affordable Housing Trust Program, state funding programs like the LITC program, Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, or federal programs that exist either through grants from various entities, from various federal entities, or in the form of the housing subsidies that are administered by the Housing Authority, or sometimes by the, and then additionally, public-private partnerships. There are advantages on both sides. You know, MHA often is a developer partner in some of the housing developments that occur across the city. We partner with private developers because they bring certain assets to the table, we bring certain advantages to the table. So it just typically allows us to work together and to deliver a more efficient and feasible project. And then, of course, pilot agreements, which we are here to discuss today. So some of the benefits of the pilot agreements, next slide, please, are the reduced operating expense, the pilots lower the cost of the pilot, the, the lower cost of the pilot fee versus the fully assessed property tax helps reduce operating expenses on the properties. And with affordable properties, and, and I will define affordable as most of the projects that MHA does, and those are projects that are at or below 60% of the AMI. While we do have some instances that will allow for 80%, that is just not our typical affordable population. But with affordable projects that are operating on already thin margins, if you, without the pilot, without the tax relief, is, is very hard for those properties to cash flow properly and provide all of the things that they should be providing to the, to the residents therein, things like social service support or security. And, and you know, just things that you would typically have at a market rate building, that is harder to provide with the lower revenue that comes in in affordable development. Um, though, that is harder to provide with the lower revenue that comes in in affordable developments. Um, and then ongoing down the road, they provide financial stability. So development deals, uh, with LITC support, they are typically not allowed to recapitalize, uh, within the first 15 years of the time that they receive the tax credits. So that means that the performer that you put together today has to still work to some degree, you know, 15 years from now. And there are variables that happen. And one of the biggest variables over the last two or three years has been the stark increase in insurance cost. Um, and that has been something that has been, um, a heavy burden for many of our affordable sites. Um, and if they had to deal with the spike in insurance, uh, pricing as well as a tax burden on top of that, then most of them just would not be able to cash flow. They, they, they would not be able to meet their obligations. Next slide, please. So I wanted to share with you just a couple of developments that are coming online now. Uh, one of which is, um, South City. And South City is the former Put Homes Public Housing Development. Once upon a time, you know, constructing in 1940, once upon a time, 400 units of aged distressed housing. Uh, with various issues internally asbestos, externally contaminated soil, uh, deteriorating building structure. Uh, this, um, um, we received a federal, um, Choice Neighborhood Initiative grant in 2015. So it was that at that time, that property was 75 years old. Um, so you can imagine the condition. Uh, and at the time, there were, uh, 384 households, uh, occupying the site that were all relocated. Next slide, please.
Uh, Mr. Washington.
Yes, ma'am.
You said they were all relocated?
Yes.
Or they relocated back to, because I know some, I, you know, I'm old enough to know. That some of the residents personally, if you will. Um, so certainly I'm acquainted with that facility prior to you all tearing it down. Were they all be able to be relocated back to the originals?
Uh, uh, yes, the Mission of Brooks, I'll, I'll address that in this, in this slide right here. So in, in the revitalized site, uh, site, we took, of course, a mixed income approach to the new community. As I said before, we tore down about 400, um, units and brought back online what will be by the end of construction, 712 units. Uh, 201 of those will be market rate. 118 will be affordable at or below 60% of AMI. And 393 of those will be project-based vouchers. So we did a one-for-one replacement for every, um, assisted unit that was on site at the time of demolition. Uh, now, will they relocate? That's their choice. What they received was a housing choice voucher, uh, to be able to leave the site and go anywhere, uh, within the continental United States, uh, that accepts, uh, has a voucher program. Uh, for, uh, those that chose to come back as the units were coming back online, they were offered the first opportunity. It's called right of first refusal. They were offered the first opportunity to reoccupy the units as they were coming online by phase. Um, if I had to ballpark it, I think we have, uh, maybe a relocation, uh, return rate of about 35% or so. Uh, but I can get you that exactly.
I guess my most important concern, what I'm thinking about is. Did everyone who want, who wanted to return to that specific location were able to, were you able to accommodate them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if they wanted, if they wanted to come back, then yes, we were able to accommodate.
Thank you.
And so, of course, we went from a site, next slide, that, um, you know, looked, uh, like the traditional public housing that was built in the 40s and plus that was greatly distressed, greatly, uh, deteriorated. Next slide, please, to this community that you see here today. And within that community, um, you have, uh, five, of the 712 units that would be available, you have 511 affordable units that have been able to come online. That was made possible by the pilot agreement. Uh, one of the reasons that I said it's made possible by the pilot agreement is that we wouldn't even been able to get off the ground if not for the pilot. Uh, it, these properties, um, in addition to the capital stack that exists. And while this one was beneficial enough to have a large anchor grant, $30 million, uh, uh, to anchor the development and be a resource. Uh, as well as an allocation of 9% tax credits. Um, i- it still needed, uh, private mortgage to complete the, to complete the financing. And, uh, if we just take a look, next slide, please. Uh, next slide. At, um, South City Phase Five, which was a 120-unit, um, senior building. Um, I believe that the estimated tax rate there, um, or I'm sorry, the estimated, um, pilot, uh, fee there was about, uh, a little over $9,000. Uh, whereas the tax, uh, for this building would have been, uh, a little over $300,000. Wouldn't have been able to meet the debt service ratio, uh, to cover the, about a little over $5 million in private mortgage that went into this phase. And that would have created a gap that we just frankly didn't have the subsidy resources to, to cover. So it, it would not have been a feasible project if not for the pilot. Next two slides, please. And so the next one that, um, we have done, and it's actually in the lease-up process now, is Edge View at Legends Park. Uh, MHA has surplus, surplus land, uh, at the back of the former Dixie Homes project, uh, which is now, uh, Legends Park. Um, and we did a 99-unit, uh, senior building that is 100% affordable. And meaning this one is 100% supported by project-based vouchers. And, uh, at this, um, development, uh, because of the 100% project-based voucher support. Uh, we were able to go even deeper in affordability than we typically are because the residents will only pay 30% of their adjusted, uh, gross income, uh, on this site. And, uh, depending on their, uh, you know, what that bears out to be, the Housing Authority pays to, you know, pays to balance. Uh, we have on this site 30, 25% of the units are reserved for residents that are at or below 30% AMI. And for a single-family, um, household, uh, 30% AMI is 17.9. Uh, we have seven units reserved for homeless or near homeless veterans who typically are at that 30% AMI level. And then the balance of the units are reserved for residents, uh, at or below 50%. So we didn't even go up to the 60% AMI at this development. We wanted to make sure that it was, we were serving, uh, a senior population that's typically more vulnerable and have less options, less housing options, uh, than other populations. Yeah, if we go a couple of slides forward. So what we laid out here was, um, what the, uh, financing for this looks like. Um. With the pilot agreement and without, um, if we go to the, um, second column, I'm sorry, first column. Uh, you'll see that the, the, the pilot fee is approximately $5,100, uh, which allowed us to secure a first mortgage of about $4.4 million. This, um, particular project was, it, it has a, a very extensive capital stack. Uh, because we pursue, uh, 4% low-income housing tax credits, which just don't generate the same amount of investment equity as 9% do. So we had to work a little harder, uh, to be able to complete the capital stack here. But we got a lot of local and state support. Uh, we have investments from the city of Memphis, uh, and from THDA, from the CC Foundation, from CRA. So I mean, so they, it, it is, I think, seven different sources in this capital stack. But it still needed a mortgage in order to complete the, uh, the debt coverage. Uh, and if we look at this on the second column, if there were no pilot, uh, but instead, um, assessed property taxes at $170,000. Then that would have reduced the, um, ability to get the required, uh, first mortgage, uh, for this by, uh, almost $1.9 million, thereby making the project infeasible. So that's just a couple of examples of, you know, between just these two projects, 610 affordable units have been produced, uh, between these two. Of that 610, 492 of those units are supported by Memphis Housing Authority's, um, project-based voucher program. In the pipeline right now, in approved project-based voucher, um, um, allotments, uh, allocations, rather. Um, we have another senior building, um, that will be making an application to the, uh, TH, to THDA, um, for LITC financing. And that, uh, consists of 203 affordable units. Uh, 51 of those are project-based vouchers. Um, we have, um, a 51-unit, um, development, uh, over at, at, at Melrose. Um, that, uh, has 51 project-based vouchers. Another phase of Legends Park, um, that is 72 total affordable units, 26 project-based vouchers. And then, um, uh, uh, another 144-unit, uh, 100% affordable, uh, unit, uh, development, uh, that will have all project-based vouchers. Those are currently in, in application status or will be in 2025 with, uh, Tennessee Housing Development Agency. But if there is no pilot support, none of these, uh, applications are, are feasible. None of these developments are feasible. So that will further reduce our affordable housing deficit by about 470 units. And that's all I have. I'll stop now, any questions?
Okay, Madam Trustee. Good afternoon, Regina Newman County Trustee.
Yes.
Um, is the final analysis of whether or not to grant a pilot for MHA in the hands of the HE Board of Memphis?
Yes.
Okay, and are your, are their numbers for pilots, units, and affordable housing units inclusive of yours? Or not?
Um, of what I talked about here today?
Yeah.
Uh, no, because I, I focused on today in my presentation once that we have a couple, uh, project-based vouchers with. They have, uh, uh, developments have the, uh, ability to choose whether or not they want to include the voucher support, uh, in their projects or not. Uh, so some of the ones that, uh, Attorney Carpenter referenced today, uh, the ones particularly from ALCO, they do not have our voucher support.
Okay.
And so they're not in my, in my particular account.
Okay, but your, whatever pilots MHA has generated and whatever number of units, housing units MHA has generated probably in their numbers?
Yes.
That he mentioned earlier?
Yes.
And so the, the difference is that 40% of the units he mentioned earlier are quote affordable housing, but you have additional vouchers, et cetera. That, that can make up to 100% affordable.
I, I think, um, in, in, my reinterpret what I heard, uh, what Attorney Carpenter was referencing was that there is, in order to even qualify for the, uh, the pilot support. If you have a, a, a proposed development, 40% of those units have, have to be at or below 60% AMI.
I'm sorry, which are your units?
I need you to say your name.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. Yeah, so while, while we, while we serve, oh, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
That was Janice Banks being out of order, I'm sorry.
Okay. But while we, while we serve, in essence, the same affordable popul, uh, population, there are different ways to serve them. You can have a, a, an MHA pilot. You can have a, a, a development that is at or below 60% of AMI. And you cannot include one of our funding programs within it. Uh, so, uh, but it, but it still serves the affordability needs of, of a particular community.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Washington, um, I'm looking at your handout. One of the things that stands out to me here, uh, next to the last page, impact of pilot, well, next to the last page. The third sentence, number three. Or scenario one includes $1,378 in HEH, the annual administration fee for pilot monitoring. Explain that, please.
I think that that may be just a breakout of the, um, of the pilot fee. Um, and, but. Uh, that is, that is my understanding of that. That's just a breakout of the, of the pilot fee. So of the pilot fee. No, actually, it's not. It's in the, in the debt service coverage ratio analysis.
So it's what now?
So, so I, I think that is just a, a separate fee, uh, for the monitoring of that. Um, I, I'd have to clarify with my developer partner that, that made that note in there, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then number four. Scenario depicts annual costs associated with the property's pilot. I mean, I just, you know, if you could help me to understand that, I don't understand that sentence at all.
You say?
Number four.
Can't, I can't read it, it's too little for me. Can you read it back to me?
Oh, okay, uh, scenario, scenario one, oh, she's going to give you a copy. Are you going to read to her? He said he couldn't read it.
Yeah, I can't read.
Oh, okay.
It was two and three. So in, um, developing the, uh, method, methodology, uh, uh, for these cost bases. Uh, my team referred to, uh, policies within the Board of Equalizations, uh, definitions of how, uh, property taxes are derived. So that is what that reference is, is for. I did not include that, uh, slide as part of this, um, but that is, that is what it is a reference to.
Okay. Any questions? Do you know further questions from members? We will, thank you, Mr. Washington. Do you have any further comments?
Uh, I do not, and I'm happy to, uh, participate, uh, as, as needed. But again, our, our situation from a policy standpoint is a little more unique than some of the.
But I do think you would be an excellent resource in our coalition of willing.
Okay.
Since you manage, uh, big housing development and it has so many components. And, and some of the things that we're looking at, definitely there.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Now, we will move to our next entity, Collierville. Come on down.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michael Clark. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director for the town of Collierville. Um, I've only been in this role for about nine months ago, relocated from North Carolina. So I'm still learning some of the processes and procedures. However, um, I believe our, a copy of our documents were emailed to everybody earlier this week. I, I see a thumbs up, that's good. Um, the Collierville IDB was created in 1979 and has been a valuable resource to the community. Hearing some of the discussions, um, from the other presenters, a couple items of note. Uh, right now, we do have five pilot projects, one of which is going to expire later this year. Um, we have not always adopted and approved pilots. Uh, we have not always approved, um, uh, retention pilots. And frequently, these votes are not unanimous. We do have a quantitative metric that we use, um, consistent with some of the other municipalities and exceeding what Edge requires. We do work collaboratively with Edge. Um, additionally, we do have a diversity agreement that's part of our application process for these corporations, um, that they must meet in compliance with the county regulations. for these corporations that they must meet in compliance with the county regulations. Let's see here, we do have three additional pilots that are going to be coming on board later on. And all of these industries are limited. We do not offer pilot programs for any residential uses. The majority of these are clean industrial office complexes. Sometimes one deviation from that was recently an expand, or the expansion of the Campbell Clinic in Collierville. In addition to recording, new jobs are going to be coming in as well as existing jobs. We do have a portion on our application that also separates out relocated jobs. So if an entity, let's say, is coming from Oklahoma, we want to know how many of those positions will actually be coming into Collierville to better understand the complete economic impact to the town. We do, there was a question earlier today regarding what other entity or kind of benefits do we preach? Well, in Collierville, we preach rail, river, roads and runway. We have access to all of those. And because of those resources, in combination with the pilot program, we're able to attract industries. In terms of the metrics that we make sure that they follow in terms of compliance, we do have an annual compliance period, which they not only need to provide details of the original jobs of their median salary from when they started, as well as the projected and what is currently on the ground as of the end of the calendar year, but also those new jobs to make sure that they're meeting those benchmarks. We also require them to provide details of the original investment in property and in construction, as well as the personal property investments. We do work with them to make sure that they are in compliance. As an example, one of our pilot partners actually sends a full breakdown of all of their personal property inventory in order to make potential lease agreement modifications going forward. One of the things that we also do is really make sure that it's going to be a good fit for the community. And why say community, not just Collierville, but the entire Shelby County region. As expressed earlier, what is good for one part of the community is good for everybody. Ultimately, we look forward to working with Shelby County in continuation of this pilot program. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. That was quick.
Yeah, sorry.
I do have a question here.
Sure.
I heard you say you did not do residential.
That's correct.
Pilots. And then you mentioned Campbell Clinic.
That's correct.
Okay, let me just try to get this right. You got a pilot, you received a pilot for Campbell Clinic to relocate from Memphis to Collierville?
No, that one was a retention pilot. They were currently occupying offices in one of the other buildings and they were actually looking to leave the community. But going back to that but-for analysis, we had conversations, well, I should say my predecessor had conversations with them and realized that this is a good example because their new facility wasn't just going to retain jobs that they had, but was going to expand services above and beyond their existing platform. So we realized that not only keeping it in Shelby County, but keeping it in Collierville was going to be a benefit not only for the current employees, but their future new employees.
The but-for test was applied to which facility? Was that the Water River Parkway facility or the Germantown?
Neither, it was the Collierville location. They had an office specifically for rehab purposes and they were renting spaces from the Baptist Hospital, Collierville. And Baptist Hospital was doing some renovations. They decided that they're not going to renew the lease and Campbell Clinic was actually looking potentially to leave the county. Or at least for that particular location.
Okay, Madam Trustee.
Regina Newman County Trustee, good afternoon. In what ways do your metrics for granting pilots exceed Edge's?
In terms of, we have a stricter platform in what we selected that's eligible. We make sure that's very clean industries in terms of manufacturing or assembly offices. And there's, we have higher wage requirements, as an example. And we hold them to a stricter task. They, they not only need to say that they're going to do it, but we make sure that we follow up and make sure that they're actually doing what they say.
Okay, and can you send us a copy of that metric?
I believe we can. I apologize. I thought it was included.
I'm not sure, but we do have a large amount of policy and procedures from it, so.
Yeah, if it wasn't included, I'll, I'll check with our, our IDB attorney and make sure that those documents are sent over.
Thank you. Ms. Banks is in charge of paper. Okay, and the other question, which I think you just touched on was, who in the office is monitoring and judging whether the pilot's meeting its compliance and, and meeting its contract application?
There's a couple different components. I am the staff liaison to our Industrial Development Board. Ultimately, the Industrial Development Board votes every year on these compliance reports to make sure that they're in fact in compliance. When they are not, we discuss, or they discuss whether or not it's still a net benefit to the community. They discuss whether clawbacks are appropriate or termination of the pilots appropriate. In every case, especially, we just went through this the other day, in terms of our compliance reports, if there is anything that is not meeting the expectation, we notify the pilot partner and say, can you provide examples and rationale and details? As well as what is your future projection? Is this going to be a trend? Because that will determine for the following year whether we do those clawbacks or terminations.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, sir, Janice Banks. Very interesting that you do require a higher salary range than Edge. What do the pilot applicants say? First of all, what's your higher wage that you require?
I'm sorry, can you say that here?
What's the higher wage that you require?
I apologize. I don't have that documentation in front of me right now. So once again, I'll have to get back to you. But I've been informed by our, by our IDB chair that we do exceed the Edge requirements in terms of wages.
So my next question was going to be, have they ever refused or what have people said? The applicants said, when you request a higher salary?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't answer that question. Being in my role only nine months, no projects have come to the community during that duration.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, just one question here. So you did say you have monitoring, right?
That's correct.
Of your, of your applicants. Is that, that's internal or do you have an independent external?
It's internal in that we communicate directly with our pilot partners. They need to provide analysis of what their existing average wages are, as well as median wages to determine if it's just, if it's just a bunch of executive jobs. We also require that they provide details on where these employees reside. As you know, with COVID, a lot of folks start working remotely. We want to make sure that we're still seeing the net economic benefit from those residents, that it's not somebody that they're saying their office is in Collierville, but they're working in Boston, Massachusetts, as an example. So we have them provide a full analysis showing that all of this does still comply. Same thing with the personal property investments. We have them send over the documentation fully notarized and we do reserve the right to go through an audit, anything that we feel is in deficiency. All that documentation is also included in our pilot procedures.
In your pilot procedures, do you also reserve the right for an onsite review? Post-review after the pilot has been awarded?
Can you elaborate on the question onsite review?
Onsite, go to the facility, go to where that pilot facility is located.
That I don't know off the top of my head. I apologize. Most of them have, have had an open door policy and anytime that we want to stop by, they have no option.
No, 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 no. My question was, do you have, do you reserve the right in your policies and procedures to, to have an onsite review or to verify the content of their application? Some of the questions that you ask, do you have five or six widgets, if you will? And they say they have five or six widgets. Do you do an onsite review to find or determine that that is accurate?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Would you, did someone ask for their policies and procedures? Okay, okay.
Yeah, a copy of those were provided.
Oh, did? Okay, good deal. Thank you for that.
No problem.
I think I have one more question. No, that's it. That's all encompassing. Anyone else? Did you have?
The only other thing is, I, I appreciate over the years Shelby County working with the Town of Collierville to allow us to be able to execute these pilots. As you know, one of the biggest factors in determination of relocation is risk. And by allowing a single municipality to go through and do the reviews and the execution, that helps to reduce the risk and especially in competition with other regions, it really puts us first and foremost. So I really appreciate your cooperation in assisting us with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Alrighty, Germantown, Germantown, Tennessee. Come on down.
Good afternoon. Cameron Ross, Economic and Community Development Director for the City of Germantown.
So are you also an employee of the Industrial Development Board or liaison? Or what is your capacity with the IDB?
I'm staff liaison to the Industrial Development Board.
Thank you. Alrighty, so did you have a presentation?
I could save us all a lot of time and say ditto to most of what Mr. Clark said about Collierville, but I can add in addition to that that our IDB has been in existence and its focus has been job creation and we manage that through annual reports. That's part of our monitoring program. And within that, we have several measures that check back to the matrix that's part of our policy as a whole. Our focus is on corporate job creation. We really have been only office pilots over the existence of our IDB. We do not have industrial pilots. We do not have housing pilots. We do not have retail pilots. We are in line with Edge on most of their policies outside of those types of pilots, those types of pilots that I just touched on that we do not have, as well as the wage. Our average wage in Germantown is 71,369. Our PCI is 72,787. And anything less than 10% in that results in a reduction of points in the matrix that was in the documents that's been provided to you.
So how, what percentage of Shelby County taxes do you abate?
In the pilots that we have active, which is one, one full pilot for Mid-America Apartments, MAA, and then a retention pilot. So again, we focused on job creation as well as job retention. We have a retention pilot for Campbell Clinic for their Surgery Center that you referenced in your conversation with Collierville. So it's 75% in both of those, 75, 25.
So you abate 75% of Shelby County taxes and 25% of Germantown taxes?
No, ma'am, we share, we're 75 Germantown, 75 Shelby County.
Okay, and what was the 25?
It's, 25% is what we still get, both of us, Shelby County and Germantown.
Okay. Any questions? Can you elaborate a little bit on your monitoring?
Yes.
Monitoring of your pilots?
We do an annual report that is required by all active pilots, retention and other. And so the IDB meets annually to go through those reports and approve those reports as a board. We also, through our policy, reserve the right to have an onsite audit and go through and verify everything that's within their reports, as well as their employment numbers. We use a third party for that audit and the company bears the cost of that audit if something within their annual report requires the trigger of an audit. We have gone through that with a company that we, is no longer on a pilot with the City of Germantown. They had a reduction in the number of years of their pilot and we spent a significant amount of time onsite going through the audit and verifying their numbers. They are still located in Germantown and Shelby County, though.
And so you said, did you say you have, you do or do not have apartments?
We do not have a housing pilot. That is not allowed within our policy.
This Mid-America Apartments Limited Part?
Mid-America Apartments, MAA, is a real estate investment trust that has their corporate headquarters in Germantown.
It's just the headquarters?
Correct.
Okay, how many employees?
Several hundred. They also have offices in Dallas and Atlanta, but they are based out of Germantown.
Do they have apartments in Shelby County?
They do have apartment complexes in Germantown.
Okay, okay.
But it has no bearing on, it has nothing to do with our policy or programs.
I hear you loud and clear. Okay, but they have 700 employees here in the headquarters?
Several hundred. I can get the exact number for you.
Okay, okay, that's good. Any questions? Ms. Banks?
I do. Is there, oh, in the PMP that you sent us, thank you very much. Is your audit process conducted by the external auditor also in that?
The allowance for us to conduct that audit is within the policy, but the actual process of the audit just follows that third-party auditors' process. In the case that I referenced, it was Watkins-Juberall conducted the audit for us.
Oh, who was it again? I'm sorry.
Watkins-Juberall.
And oh, how many points can, you say you take away 10% of the points? Or you get, they get points taken away if they don't meet the average median income that you request? How many, is that, is that formula for determining how a company gets denied or loses all their points or is that in the PMP as well?
Yes, ma'am, it is in the matrix document. And it's, if it's a 10% less than the Germantown wage requirement, it results in a reduction of points, not a reduction in 10% points. And this is Mr. Andy Jones, who is our counsel for Germantown IDB.
MAA under their pilot lease has requirement for
Can't hear you.
MAA under their lease has a requirement for having 219 jobs in Germantown and they had, they've met those and the average salary requirement was 85,000 and their average salary is actually 91,000, actually 96,000.
Okay, just one more question. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Banks, go, you're done.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back to that Mid-America Partnership, Limited Partnership. You said that they have several hundred headquarters employees, right?
They have.
A couple hundred.
Germantown is the headquarters and they have several offices around the country.
Okay, so the Germantown, okay.
But there's 219 jobs that they have met as part of their pilot agreement.
Did they move those jobs to Germantown or were those jobs created in and are filled by Germantown residents?
They moved those jobs to Germantown.
Okay, let me, let me read one, one thing for the record. TCA 7-53-102 sets forth the legislative intent for the creation and use of pilot incentives. The expressed intent is to facilitate workforce development, increase production of agricultural commodities and the development of quality affordable housing. And I had to read that into the record because I think we're missing the mark. We are missing the mark. Yes, we are, and more than one. So what we, we, we Yes, we are, and more than one. So what we, we, we definitely need to commit to compliance, number one. And I know you've always done this. It's, it, you know, I'm 76, so you, but you were doing this before I was born. Okay, not you personally, but it's been operating this way. And so that's why we are creating our pilot ad hoc committee. We need to standardize some of these operating procedures, come into compliance with the state statute, if you will. And then we need to make sure that we can measure this and monitor this, and that they're, you know, there's some accountability and transparency for the public benefit. That's what we gotta do. Yes, sir.
Uh, for the record, uh, MAA did create 25 new jobs as part of their pilot moving into Germantown.
They created 25 new ones?
Yes, ma'am.
And they've been there, what, 23 years?
They have been in Germantown since 2018.
Okay. 2018 or 2008? I think it's 2008.
No, ma'am. It's 2018 in the building because the building wasn't, uh, there at the time that they, uh, committed to Germantown. They moved into a new building.
Okay. We, well, we're gonna have to correct the assessors' records then. I mean, not the assessor, the trustee. Okay, we'll, we'll get that right.
We're happy to assist on that, as well as any other, uh, interest of the ad hoc committee.
I'm sorry?
We're happy to assist on that, as well as any other interest of the ad hoc committee.
Thank you so much, 'cause it says here 12/31/2008. End date 12/31/2033. All right, if you, uh, do you have any additional remarks you'd like to make?
No, ma'am.
We appreciate your patience. Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Uh, any commen- committee members have comments? Okay. All right. Y'all are excused. Thank you so much. A robust and informative, enlightening meeting today. We appreciate everyone who came in. And, uh, with all of our guests having departed, this committee stands adjourned. And if you'd like to stay around and chit chat, that's fine. I encourage you to do that. We have some snacks in the back.